I would like to call the Board of Education meeting for March the 6th, 2023 to order. Which top public schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve? Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. The pledge of allegiance tonight and the presentation of the colors is done by Jardine Academy, Cadet Staff Sergeant Moran Rivera, Cadet Staff Sergeant Angelica Rivera, Cadet Corporal Bristol Watts, and Cadet Corporal Courtesy Williams. Would you please rise for the presentation of the colors?
Carry colors. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Colors, up. Left face. Present, arms. Ma'am, Jardine, outstanding, motivating, clairvoyant, request permission to post the colors. Ma'am?
You may post the colors.
Thank you. Ma'am, order, arms, post colors. Present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms, colors dismissed.
Join me in thanking the Jardine Academy. Good day. Superintendent Thompson and Stan, would you join me at the podium, please?
Yes.
We have had a wonderful past president for our board for two years. Stan Reeser did an outstanding job of leading us through some very difficult times, and we came out stronger as a board than we went in. And that's a difficult task to do. You've done a wonderful job. We appreciate you so very much, and we wanted to give you this small token of our gratitude.
Well, thank you, Cheryl. I will definitely cherish this forever. Obviously, a lot of board members helped me, and I appreciate all the efforts that everybody's given all these years. And as long as we keep putting the kids first, we'll be in good shape. Thanks.
Okay, Patrick, first item.
First item under reports, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Welcome, gentlemen. We're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you for having us. Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Dr. Thompson, and board members. My name is Israel Torres, and I'm a junior at Northeast Magnet.
My name is Eli Ustash, and I'm a senior at Northwest High School. Okay, so today we're going to be presenting what Terry Moses, she presented to us at the Super SAC meeting about the war on drugs. We were talking about the fentanyl crisis and how it has damaged a lot of the youth in our society and their demographics and all that stuff, but he'll explain.
For those who do not know, fentanyl is a powerful synthetic opioid used in counterfeit prescription pills. Doses are inconsistent. A high enough dose would tell the brain to stop breathing, leading to the victim suffocating and dying. Once the victim recognizes the symptoms, it is too late. Deaths have increased by 109% from December 2019 to December 2021. Unfortunately, it has happened to countless youth. Families are shattered because of the crisis. We do not want any more families to go through that. We are afraid of losing our classmates to overdose. On behalf of our Super SAC group, we ask that we begin having assemblies educating everyone about this crisis as soon as possible before it is too late. After assemblies, we ask the advocacy to discuss and take time to reflect on what they have learned. We also ask that the district make simple flyers with helpful resources that students could read quickly when walking to their next class.
Okay, we'd like to thank, I think, a lot of the students. We do want to thank you for coming out, Terry Moses, for coming out and speaking to us about the fentanyl crisis. I think that a lot of us agreed that it was probably our favorite meeting we ever had. A lot of people were even tearing up in there, so great job. One thing we did want to talk about, or we did talk about, was mental health in schools. You know, with drugs being such an easy way to kind of get away from your everyday life and for a lot of people to, as you know, most people say, take the edge off, you know, you know, mental health is a serious issue that a lot of us need to understand and that we need to, you know, focus on when it comes to kids using drugs and how they're using drugs. And a lot of students, you know, feel that, you know, they'd rather get judgment from their schools instead of receiving, you know, help for their mental health issues. But from past years and my personal experience, the schooling system does a very good job of coming to a student's needs when the time comes.
I cannot put into words how grateful we are to be in a district where student input is valued. For those listening, it is your choice whether to do drugs. Only medications are prescribed to you by the doctor or pharmacy. No matter what peers tell you, it is not worth risking your life. If they are in pill form, it is not legit as it has to be crushed and tested. The pills are inconsistent. One could be safe, and the next one could end your life. Those selling them do not care if you die. They only care about the money. Your life is in your hands. Find healthy, de-stressing activities, and remember that pills can kill.
And then we'd just like to end this off with, you know, thank you for allowing us students to be a part of the Super SAC. We really enjoy giving you guys feedback and hearing all the plans you guys have for the future. It's quite exciting. I'm sad that I'm leaving, but, you know, that's how it goes. If you guys have any questions, you can say them now, I guess.
I'm seeing no questions, but we couldn't agree with you more. This is a huge issue that we do want to address in our classrooms. Ernestine?
Could you tell us some of the facts that you learned from Terry Moses when she gave the presentations?
We did talk about where they come from, you know, cartels, things like that, how they're transported and how they've spread it from kind of outside to in in the United States and how Kansas has really started to struggle with these issues. We did learn, in fact, that, you know, it's a synthetic drug, so it is created using, you know, different chemistry stuff. And, you know, it's not something that can necessarily be farmed. It's very cheap to make, so a lot of people put them in different pills, and they come in different quantities in each pill. It's not necessarily an exact amount that can be put into a pill or really into anything. We did talk about it coming in powder form. I know a lot of, I've heard a lot of things where people have, you know, picked up a dollar bill on the street and, you know, fentanyl dust will just come from the bottom of it, and, you know, people will die that way. It's very serious.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Isaiah and Eli. You did a great job tonight. Thank you.
Before you guys leave, hold on just a minute, you guys. I, I just wanted to say that, where are you going? I just wanted to say, you know, it has been a pleasure to have Super SAC. Super SAC is a way that we hear voices that we typically are not able to hear. And those of you who do not know, I want to make it clear, we have a monthly meeting where we have representation from all of our high schools that come in, and they're very opinionated, which is good, and they have good opinions, and they tell us, you know, things that we had not thought about. And the ideas that they shared are things that we're taking back to our team for action. So we don't just have them come and hang out with them and become good friends, because that's what happens, we become really good friends with each other, but we also learn from each other. And I just wanted to thank you guys and say that we really appreciate your energy and your passion on the topics that we bring and for giving us good ideas that we can go back, discuss, and implement to make your experiences in school better, because that's the purpose of that, is to make sure that what you all need, you get. So thank you.
Next item.
Next item under reports, good news.
They're a tough act to follow. They're amazing young people. Though, I have really cool items to bring to your attention as well, because we get to celebrate the Wichita Public Schools on the national scale. It's great when we can celebrate locally, when we can celebrate at the state level, but tonight you have the opportunity to congratulate seven schools and one of our central office leaders for national recognition. So we are pleased to begin good news this evening by inviting the dynamic duo from our Magnet office, Ms. Phyllis Cottner and Mr. Jesse Milne, to come forward. They are going to introduce you to the seven schools that have put Wichita Public Schools on the map this year with Magnet Schools of America. This is very exciting because we have a first. So without further ado, Phyllis and Jesse.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you all doing? I'm usually really energetic because it's a board meet, I'm going to try to tone it down a bit, but I am just thrilled with the number of schools that we are celebrating, and we have some distinctions that it is the first time we've done it, so I'm so happy. And so Jesse's going to give a bit more information, and then we will call folks down to celebrate this exciting news.
Yeah, so I, I'm not, I can't match her personality, but not on the outside, but I'm just excited on the inside. So about 10 years ago, we received, the Magnet Department, five schools in the district received a Magnet Schools Assistance Program grant from the federal government to kind of revitalize five of our schools. And at that point, we became members of Magnet Schools of America, which is a, just kind of the national organization that represents Magnet Schools. They're based in DC, they have lobbyists, and they, and they advocate school choice at the national level. When, when we got the grant, we started writing for what, for what they have, what they call Merit Awards, which they have Merit Award of Distinction and Merit Award of Excellence. And the first couple of years, we didn't, we, we wrote, and we didn't get any. But finally, in 2017, McLean won our first Merit Award, and then we had, ever since then, we've had winners every year except for 2021, which because of the pandemic, they didn't, they didn't have the, the contest. So I've, I've been up here, I've talked about this before. The last time was virtually, I was filmed, and for some reason, I'm less nervous now than I was when I was being filmed, but, but at 45, I just assume I'm never going to be a very good public speaker. So anyway, so in the past, we've won School of Distinction. There's School of Distinction, like I said, and School of Excellence. And, and School of Distinction is hard to get. It's not something that they just throw around. Phyllis and I have both read for Magnet Schools of America, where you take about 40 hours of your December and, and read applications from other schools around the country and rate them. So, so we have a pretty good idea of what it takes and, and what's good and what's bad. So, so when we win these awards, we're really happy about it, because it's not, again, it's not just something that they throw around willy-nilly. So School of Distinction is really hard to get. School of Excellence, we've never had a winner, and that, the rubric is based on the five pillars of Magnet, which are diversity, innovative curriculum, and professional development, academic excellence, leadership, and family and community partnerships. And to get School of Excellence, you essentially have to get 100% on the rubric. It, it's really hard to get. So we celebrate, usually in the last seven or eight years, we've had one or two, excuse me, one or two winners a year, which we're really proud of. This year, we had seven winners of, of, of the Magnet, of Merit Awards. Is this where I list the winners? Yeah, and I'll have the principal, I think all of our principals are here. I'll have them come down when I call it. So Allison, traditional Magnet, has won it for the third year in a row, the Merit Award of Distinction. So, yeah, come on down. Sorry, we have these big cumbersome banners as well as the... Brooks Center for STEM in the Arts wrote and won the very first year. A lot of times, schools will try a few times before they actually win, and, and Brooks hit out of the park on their first try. Earhart Environmental Magnet won it for the second time. They won it in 2020. Again, another first try. We had Hyde International Studies and Leadership Magnet, won on, first time they wrote. So Jardine, and a lot of people already heard me tell this joke, but I'm going to tell it again because it's accurate. I was at Jardine when we got the grant, and I was on those teams the first couple of years that we wrote for the grant, or wrote for the award, and, and we never won. And then I left and started working for the Magnet office, and, and the first year, I didn't help write for the grant, they won. And, not the grant, but the award. And this is their fifth win. They've won every year since 2018. And, and we have another, another first-time school that wrote and won, and that's Price-Harris Communications Magnet. And I'd mentioned that we've always won in the past School of Distinction, which, again, is a significant honor, and I can't overstate that. But we, this year, we had our very first School of Excellence winner, and that was Mayberry Cultural and Fine Arts Magnet. Which was incidentally their first time writing as well, so, so very impressive. They're doing amazing things at all these schools, and, and we're really proud of them. It's a great honor.
If you came here to support your schools, go ahead and stand up. It takes a whole team to make that happen, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, it's, it's not easy to write these. It takes hours and hours to address the different elements on the rubric, and usually a whole team of people. So the principals, in, in most cases, have had a team of their instructional coaches, day leaders, and maybe even teachers, helping them put together award-winning applications.
So thank you, guys, and you get to keep the banners.
I cannot tell you how proud the district is of all of you. You represent the district well, and we really, really thank you. Congratulations to all of you. Next item. We have another great award here.
Dr. Thompson's going to join me as we invite Sean Hudsbeth forward. Sean, don't look nervous. Come on, join us. I have the microphone. One, we, we often reflect on 2020 as a year of challenges, but one of the most amazing things that happened in the Wichita Public Schools in 2020 is that Sean Hudsbeth accepted the invitation to become the Chief Human Resources Officer in the Wichita Public Schools. By the time he came to us, Sean had a nearly two-decade career at Davis Moore in Wichita. He had been actively engaged in the HR community for more than 30 years. He's been a member of SHRM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management, since 1996, and he's been a fixture on SHRM boards both locally and at the state level. During 2013, which is when he joined SHRM, he was also nominated and acknowledged by the Wichita Business Journal for their HR Professional of the Year Award. Fast forward 10 years, and Sean is one of us, we are so thrilled to say. And this year, in addition to being recognized as a member of the HR Hall of Fame by the Wichita Business Journal, we have also been able to reflect, not just this year, but his time with us, that he was recognized in 2021 with the George Trombold Award, which honors the most outstanding HR professional in the state of Kansas, regardless of industry, big, small, or type. As I said, he was inducted into the Wichita Business Journal HR Hall of Fame last month, and today, March 6th, will hit the press the National Society for Human Resource Management Spring 2023 HR Magazine. Its circulation is over 300,000 people around the world. And guess who is acknowledged in the SHRM magazine? He, Sean is featured in the Member Spotlight section as a member of SHRM since 1996. I first had the opportunity to meet Sean when we were both in the Advanced Kansas Project, and we worked on opportunities to introduce young people to STEM careers early, and we did some super cool things at the middle school level. And I knew then that Sean had a heart for education, and he shared the story about how he thought about being a teacher, and then he met his wife in college class and...
First day.
Yeah, first day, first day. And his path took him in different directions, but it, it has been clear to me since I had the opportunity to know Sean, that he loves to teach, he loves to coach, he loves to share knowledge and build other people up. And we were so very fortunate when he said yes to Dr. Thompson's invitation to come be part of our team. So we were thrilled this evening to take the opportunity to recognize not only his Wichita Business Journal Hall of Fame appointment, but also the national profile, the international profile, that his recognition in the SHRM International Magazine brings to Sean, his career, and to the Wichita Public Schools. So, Dr. Thompson, if you would be so kind as to present him a certificate of recognition and celebration, please help me give Sean Hudsbeth a round of applause.
If my wife is watching, she's not going to believe this next sentence, but I've never been at a loss for words. I've said this before, it, it's never about the awards or the recognition, it's about how you treat people. I never thought, with a marketing degree out of Wichita State, I'd probably be working for her, you know, but here I am into a 31-year career in HR, and I'm truly blessed, because my career and the amazing team that I have that do the day-to-day work are just fantastic people, and it, it's about making sure that people are taken care of in an organization. And so that has been my life's work, is to make sure that people have resources, they have options, they have somebody to go to when they need insurance, whether they need life insurance, whether they need health insurance, whether they need somebody to look at their resume because they want to advance in this great organization that we call Wichita Public Schools. You know, there's so many things that we will still continue to strive to do better, but all in all, this is just a great place for me to be, and I'm humbled by all of you. There's amazing district leadership team, people sitting in this audience, and trust me, they are brothers and sisters at heart. You kept one of us, we all bleed, we work so well together. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention my talent acquisition manager, Jenna Shabon. Jenna actually got the HR Professionals Award for the first time on February 14th as well at the same banquet, so I want to also congratulate her and all the fine, talented staff that I have. So it's a pleasure. Thank you all very much.
Sean, from the board, we, we appreciate you so very much. You've helped us with the superintendent search, but you also have proven to be an absolutely phenomenal HR person, so thank you very much. Next item.
Next item under reports, Service Employees International.
And I do not see ESA, so next item.
Next item under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Well, we get two for one tonight. Welcome, Katie, welcome, Tracy. Glad to see you both.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Thompson, BOE President Cheryl Logan, Vice President Diane Albert, and all the other BOE members. And tonight, I'm excited to share more about the AFT Reading Opens the World Grant that we, we mentioned in the fall, and so Tracy's going to give you an update and talk about. Next month, we're going to have a big kickoff for that as well. So I know Tracy's been working hard on this, and she's been working with the Deputy Superintendent Gil Alvarez, so, yeah, we're excited to just share how it's going.
Hi, I'm Tracy Callard. I'm a gifted and talented teacher. I work in five of the elementary schools on the north side, and I have an office at Pleasant Valley Middle School, and I have kids with IEPs in grades kindergarten through eighth. But one of my favorite things I do is I get to run around and deliver books to struggling third-grade readers every single week in all my buildings. As you remember, last fall, AFT gave us $20,000, and the children and five teachers who Gil has graciously funded meet with, the teachers meet with the kids after school and on weekends via Microsoft Teams. They, the teachers and the, the parents are always in contact. The kids actually say what kind of books they want to read, and then we order them based on the grant, and they show up, and I run out and deliver them, and as soon as I walk in the room, all these kids stand up and run and hug me. So it's, my middle school kids do not do that, but the third graders do. And the schools we're serving are Ortiz, Woodland, Irving, Pleasant Valley, and Cloud. Right now, the number has declined a little bit. We started with 60 kids, we're down to 50. Some children moved, some, the parents just said, "We don't have time to do this anymore." But I'm happy to report that the 50 kids still in the program are now reading chapter books. It's, it's amazing. Several of them, I've seen their names on posters for the 10 highest readers in their building at third grade, so they really love it, they're very motivated, you know, getting that book. But what's really exciting, Randy Weingarten, who's the president of AFT National, she's coming out on April 20th to meet with the children and their families, and hopefully with anybody who's here who's interested in coming, we'd like to hold an event. And what's really special is, and I hope that this is good for Dr. Thompson, because I know as a former elementary teacher and reading teacher, third-grade reading has been absolutely huge for you. I've seen you in the van in my buildings, and I hope you can come and, and meet Randy and, and see the kids and the families, because I really think this is going to also be a great thing to the end of... I already have called Joseph, I've already emailed him, right, Joseph? You saw that. So please come, and here's something else, they have verbally promised to give us an additional 60,000 books for third graders across the district. So, yeah, go AFT, go Wichita Public Schools, go third-grade teachers. Thank you, everybody.
That's great news. Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item, Public Communications.
We have none tonight. Next item?
Next item, under Education, 2023 Summer Programming.
Welcome, ladies.
They don't need any introductions. They're just amazing, and they're going to talk to you a little bit about what's happening with summer school. We're already talking about summer school, we just gave a report for the end, now we're starting all over again. So we're ready to get going. Ladies, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Dr. Thompson, and Board. First of all, please let me apologize for my voice. I'm feeling much better, but I'm sure I sound absolutely horrible, so I apologize for that. To your point, Dr. Thompson, we have been talking about summer school since last July when we brought about the first round of updates. And so it's hard to believe that, you know, we're finally to the point where we're getting ready. We've opened enrollment and we're getting ready to bring on the kids here in a couple of months. So that's exactly what we wanted to do tonight. We wanted to take an opportunity to update you on summer 2023 programming. Again, due to the COVID relief funds, we are able to operate an expanded summer school. So we're going to turn it over to, sorry, I do want to acknowledge that our summer program does continue to be rooted in our four strategic plan goals. But I am going to turn it over to my colleagues to share more about those programs here in just a minute. A reminder, last summer, we were able to serve over 8,000 students via all of our summer programs. And next slide, it did take over 1,800 staff members to execute this. We do hope to serve more students this summer. We're actively recruiting to fill those empty seats that we had last summer. And so we're excited about hopefully increasing the number of students we served. Michelle, you want to tell them a little bit about elementary?
Okay, so we are going to talk a little bit about elementary. And I do want to say that the early planning that we have started this year has been wonderful. It's made the system and the process so much smoother. So DeeDee, thanks for getting us going on that. We're going to stick with our summer camp theme. And we will be going through the month of June, June 5th through the 29th. It's going to be Monday through Thursdays again. And it's going, again, this year will be the nine-to-three time. And so we'll be pre-K through fifth grade in this. And their three-year-olds in pre-K will also go, but they'll only go half a day. We are going to have 17, well, basically 18 schools that will be hosting. And all of our schools will feed into these schools. So we're going to keep our groups small, we're going to cap them at 15 kids. And of course, we might go over a couple, but our goal is to cap them at 15, to keep them small. We will continue our work in ELA, we'll continue our work in math, and in our social-emotional learning. We, you know, we say that this process is about learning loss, but I really feel like at this point, it's about just continuing our learning and keeping it going. We're going to have this, continue to partner with arts partners and do the STEAM learning. And we're going to keep everything literature-based. So those are, so those are some of the continuations from this year, from last year going into this year. And I'm going to go ahead and, so I want to look at the schedule, and we'll talk a little bit about what's different. You're going to see it looks very similar. But what we did was we took the feedback that we received from teachers and the feedback we received from parents, and we changed a few things through the process. So we're going to continue with the SEL Literature Circles. This was a hit, a lot of feedback that we received was that it brought a sense of belonging. We had students, and I already shared that, students that were, and parents that were concerned about, well, they're not going to their regular school, they don't have their regular teacher, they're not with their regular friends. And when they were able to have these literature circles in the morning, it built a real sense of belonging right away. So we're going to continue with that as we start out. And then they're going to go into the literature work. And this is the ELA work that begins with a lot of comprehension, and we're teaching kids strategies with comprehension. And we do it with the literature that they're going to be working with. We are going to have word recognition time because we know that's the meat, that's the rock that we're working with. One thing that we did develop as a part of this was we're building in more fluency practice. So not only will they get that foundational phonics practice, but then they'll take it to fluency, and we're going to have some intentional work with that. Also, with the comprehension and the writing piece, we were able to bring teachers together to look at our plans that we had from last year. And we've made adjustments, and we made some refinement according to feedback that we received from people. And then the teachers getting in and digging deeper into the work. We will, another piece of feedback that we heard was we need to do less virtual. They did not want students sitting and watching a screen. So as we have been partnering with arts partners, we looked at, how can we do this differently? So we will be having artists in every classroom two days a week. And then two days a week, the teachers will have a lesson plan that they'll continue on without the artist. So it will be a continuation, but they'll have, they will not be on screen, which was one feedback that we really received. And they'll have more time with the artist and with the hands-on activities. We, basically, oh, and another change, they said they need them active in the afternoon. So we have, and we wanted opportunity also for our specials teachers. So we are going to have specials in the afternoon. Every site will have two specials teachers, and we're going to get together with the specials teachers, knowing that it's a camping theme, knowing that we want kids active, and let them build, let the teachers build what they would like that 30-minute block of time to look like. And knowing that we want kids busy, we want them active, and we have a theme. So we're excited to try this new venture with the specials time. We're going to keep with the camp extension, it is going to, we did condense it to 20 minutes versus 30. We needed more practice with that fluency. So just something, that, one thing that's different also is last year, we said, okay, on Mondays, you're going to do guest readers. On Tuesdays, you're going to do Reading Under the Stars. And teachers wanted more autonomy, they wanted to build in more of their ideas. So we give them 20 minutes a day, we're going to give them a suggestion of things they can do. We do want to keep the guest readers because this was in a way that we were able to bring community people into our building and read to the kids and be that partnership with them and all of you. So, so these are just some suggestions that we're going to do. And we're going to keep with our integrated themes of Week 1, Great Outdoors, Lightning Bugs, Week 2, Constellations, Week 3, and Camping Stories and Songs. We also received feedback that they wanted the arts partners to be even more hands-on. So even with the artists in, they are revamping their lessons to make them more hands-on. So we always ask, will this be a cost for this program? And no, it will not be. What the students will receive is we will serve breakfast every day, we will serve lunch every day. They are going to get instruction every day. We will be providing transportation for students that live one point greater than 1.5 miles from their address. From the school that's closest to their address. And then they're going to have those STEAM activities, lots of rich literature. We're going to continue that work. And some virtual, they do have the opportunity to have field trips that are virtual and authors, but we're keeping it to a minimum. And the teacher is going to be the one who will decide how much they will receive that. So enrollment, we have started this process on February 15th. The parents and the students that were invited received a parent link, and they also received a letter of invitation that went home with the kids. They are busy enrolling already, and we have, we will have our deadline being April 7th. So we are going by space available, and I am seeing some good interest already by families. I think, Lauren, you said we're looking at about 2,000 right now?
There were 2,300 enrolled between pre-K through 8. When I checked this morning, this afternoon at around noon, there were 2,300 kids already enrolled between pre-K through 8th grade.
And we're still going to April 7th, so.
All right, my turn in the litany of secondary programs. We will start with the reminders and adjustments to Summer Camp WPS, which is grade 6 through 8, so current middle school students. Last year, we had seven sites, we're going to go down to four. Part of that is, the sites will just be bigger. Part of that is also, we have a lot of buildings with a lot of work being done this summer. And so we have to be very strategic about where we can go. And we also had some amazing assistant principals at each of these sites who are willing to take on the summer school coordinator role. To be honest, they're running a small school for the month of June. You know, hiring, nutrition services, transportation, parents, all the things, right? They're doing all of that in the summer school timeframe. So it's also a great experience for those leaders to get an experience of what it's like to kind of lead a school, if you will, for a shortened amount of time. It has some information up there, much like Kuda said, we are going the whole month of June again, which is the same thing we did last year. Hopefully, there's no water main issues that cause us to lose two days of summer school this year, like we did last year. And middle school kids will go from 8 to 2 to provide tiered transportation, so that we can provide transportation. We're going to try to keep the cohort groups between 15 to 20, and we'll base that on student interest. But we already are looking pretty good on the staff side of that. Most of our sites are almost fully staffed at this point. Daily schedule, similar to what Kuda shared with you. We'll have breakfast in the morning, their opening time will be some community building. So they're doing check-in circles, they're doing games to get to know each other, just spending time. Like Kuda said, you know, they're in a different school potentially, with different friends, different teacher. And so giving them a chance to get comfortable with their classmates that they're going to be around for those 16 days in the summer. Then we are going to use AVID, which is Advancement via Individual Determination. They have a STEM Academy that they have created, that they've used. And we are going to use AVID STEM Academy to bolster our middle school programming this summer. And so they will have two STEM lessons, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And those STEM lessons incorporate science, technology, English, and math. So it's, instead of being, this is English time and this is math time, it's, we're working on, like, the big overarching theme is actually solar power. And so they're going to be doing mini lessons all connected to solar power, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. That will happen 12 times, there's also four times they're going on field trip, but we'll talk about more of that in a minute. Then they'll do a lunch recess combination because I'm 36 and still need recess, so 12-year-olds obviously still need recess. And then they'll have another lesson in the afternoon, also a STEM lesson. And then a reflection time of, okay, what did we learn today? They all have a reflection journal that they will do based on what they've learned. And then, just like last year, I brought props.
She's trying to show up elementary.
Listen, I told her, I told her her pretty face was enough, I needed props to get through the presentation. So they will all get a STEM kit again. The STEM kits all have five individual projects in them for the kids. So the kids will have 35 minutes every day to work on these, but then they'll also get to take the rest home. So if they don't finish any of them, so all the kits, everything they need is already in there. And then the names of all the projects are up on the screen. So the five kits are wind generator, circuits, gliders, hydraulic lifts, and roller coasters. So those are the five STEM projects in there, provided by Pitsco Education, which is a company right here in Kansas. And those have already been shipped, so they're either arrived at the schools today or will be arriving soon. That, all that pre-planning that DeeDee had us do, sometimes I would be on maternity leave and be like, oh, there's a summer school meeting today. It's August. But all that pre-planning was really helped us get, we are much further along at this. We did this presentation in April last year, and we're further along now, and we're doing this presentation in March than we were last year. What's the cost? Just like Kuda said, it's free, totally free. The transportation is the same for middle school as it is for elementary. So if you live one and a half miles or greater from your assigned summer school site, breakfast, lunch, cross-curricular instruction, field trips, the STEM kits, and guaranteed fun. Because if we're not going to have fun, why are we doing it? Our, we are going to do field trips on Wednesdays this year. So they, and these are either guaranteed community partners or partners that we're in conversation with. So WSU Tech absolutely is a guarantee, that was bar none. The most positive feedback we received was the WSU Tech Field Trip STEM Camp Experience. And graciously, Mr. Dixon, Rob Dixon, has reached out to WSU Tech, and they've planned, and they are so excited to host us again. So we've got WSU Tech for sure, we've got the Sedgwick County Zoo for sure, they are all in. Great Plains Nature Center is for sure. And then the Cosmosphere, the Kansas Aviation Museum, and Old Cal Town. We are in conversation of who can really handle the volume of kids, right? Because when kids go out there, if we are only down to four sites, we're talking 150, 200 potentially kids at a site, that can be challenging for some places. And so we're in talks with them about what would be the best partnership for us at this point. But three of the four field trips have already been determined, and those details have already been set. Same as Kuda, the enrollment deadline is Friday, April 7th. This data, the already enrolled, was pulled early, early in the weekend. So that number has changed a little bit. But just so that you guys know, our qualifying data for middle school this year was that you had to be high-risk in either A-reading or A-math. And then you had to be some or high-risk in the other one. That is a slight change from last year. Last year, if you were some risk in both, you qualified. But the some-risk, some-risk, plus some-risk, high-risk, and high-risk, high-risk number was so substantial, we said, okay, let's go after the, after students that we really, really, really know can benefit from this and be really intentional about our marketing. So if we are only going to have so many spots, let's make sure we give those spots to the kids who need them the most. And so that gives us 3,319 students, middle school students qualified for summer school based on that qualification data, which is 32.7% of all of our middle school students qualified for summer school. When I pulled this data early in the weekend, 403 had already enrolled, so we were at 12.14%. My super big pipe dream, hope it can come true, is that we can get a quarter, at least a quarter of the students that qualified for middle school, summer school to enroll. Last year, we ended right around 16%, I think. So the fact that 12% have already enrolled is very positive for the marketing adjustments that we've made this year. I think we can already see that they're making a difference. Let's go to high school and dive into that. You guys actually got some data around some high school things last month. So at some point, you're going to say, Lauren, quit coming and talking to us, because we've seen you several months in a row. But just a quick update on all of those programs. So ELO will happen again, ELO will be that week after Memorial Day. We want to make sure we finish ELO before summer school starts so that kids and staff do not have to choose between the two. The kids aren't there for that entire 7:30 to 11:30, 12:00 to 3:30. They're there until they've shown enough mastery in the subject to convert their F to a D, and then they're done. So some kids, you know, if you've got a 58%, you might only be at ELO for a few hours. If you, you know, you're at a 51%, because you've got to have a score in the 50s to be eligible for ELO, you know, you might be there all four days, working on showing mastery. We will have 10 sites, we added in Sowers this year for ELO. That was not a site last year, but we're super excited. All of these sites also ran ELO in January, and I was able to provide you some data about how successful our January ELO was last month at the board meeting. Where did it go? There it goes. All right, then we've got June Learning Center, which Learning Center is for students who have already been in the Learning Center during the year, but they didn't finish the class that they were in the Learning Center for. So maybe they needed to retake second semester English 1. They're a junior, they need to retake second semester English 1. They've been in the Learning Center during the school year, but they still aren't finished with the class. We will extend it so that they can keep working to make up that credit over the summer. We do that at 11 sites. And the students can also be off-site during that. The only thing that has to be onsite for is the proctoring of exams, tests and exams, they have to be proctored. Then we also have July Learning Center, which is also partially in June, but we split it based on when the summer graduation date is. And so in July Learning Center, it's the same thing, kids that still need more time to finish up that Learning Center class, but we just go down to two sites instead of keeping all of those schools open to give some of those Learning Center teachers a little bit of a summer vacation. And then high school summer school. And then, high school summer school. Last year was the biggest high school summer school we've ever had, and it was a lot on this building, on North High, because all of those kids were, over 1,000 kids were here. And so, this year, we decided to split summer school into two different, high school summer school into two different sites. So, 8th, 9th, and 10th graders will be here at North High, and then 11th and 12th graders will be at West High. Because we don't provide transportation to high school summer school, it's important that we pick buildings that are in the central part of the city, which really leaves us with northeast, north space, east space, and then west as the options, transportation-wise. Because like, it doesn't make sense to put high school summer school at southeast, because people are like, I'm not driving out there, right? Same thing with northwest, same thing with heights. You know, there's some buildings that just doesn't make sense. But east, you know, with all of its construction, that pretty much eliminated east, and so, north is going to host again. They were very thankful that they were willing to do that. And then, west, and then the virtual piece at EIA, just like we did last year. They, we don't enroll, we don't open enrollment for, open enrollment for high school summer school until April 11th. And the reason we need to do that later is because we need to be able to have conversations with kids about, hey, you might not pass that English class that you're in, based on your current grade, and so, let's get you enrolled, and then you still need to work. Hopefully, you do pass, and we can unenroll you from summer school. But it doesn't make sense to have the high school, summer school stuff open now, because it's too early in the semester to really get a gauge for what's going to happen. And so, they actually enroll April 11th through Thursday, May 25th. So, we leave that open until the very last possible day that grades are posted, so that we can get as many students that immediate, hey, you failed second semester English III, you're going to turn around and take second semester English III again, like, the week after, just so that, that way, we're, we don't have those, that need for recovery lingering out there for a long time. DeeDee, back to you.
Thank you. We also will continue several of our existing programs that we had prior to when we expanded our current, like, the elementary, middle school, and high school summer programming. So, we'll continue to offer our student support services-driven programs like Scope, YES, ESY. We'll also continue migrant programming and targeted camps and programs, like, for our Native American program and our Wichita Children's Home. We are also, it's not on the PowerPoint, but just as of today, we're also adding a program specific for some of our students who qualify for McKinney-Bento. We'll continue the Stealth Program at several buildings. We'll continue Within Reach, and that was new as of last summer, and that's targeted for our students with disabilities who are trying to recover credits. And then, we'll again offer our seat program for incoming 9th and 10th grade newcomers. And they were excited to say that that population, it will double, the qualification will double this year. So, they're hoping to serve 50 to 100 more students in comparison to last year. While we do have many of our positions filled already because of that pre-planning, I love how they kindly call it pre-planning. It's me throwing lots of meetings on their calendars and them graciously accepting. But we do still need teachers and pares and all of the other amazing people that it takes to pull this off. I mentioned in the beginning, took over 1,800 last summer. We are starting with the same number of spots that we had last year. So, while I said earlier, we do want to increase numbers, that's because we are increasing our marketing and recruiting to make sure all of our seats are filled, because they were not all filled. We had some remaining, and then we had some students who enrolled, but then were not, did not attend. And we already have a lot of different ways that we plan on reaching out to them, too, to let them know that we want them at the summer school, and that we were here for them. So, we've increased our marketing and recruiting efforts, but we do still need staff. So, if you're interested, they can apply. We will also send out an email first thing tomorrow morning. It will come from Human Resources and go out to staff, letting them know about these opportunities. I do want to take this opportunity to publicly just thank our two amazing executive directors, because, like I said, we've been planning since last July, and the multitude of other departments that it takes to pull off something of this magnitude, from facilities to Human Resources, to our IST department. I mean, you should see the amount of representation that is on our planning committee, and they're just absolutely amazing, so I just wanted to take that opportunity. Again, Michelle and Lauren are our contacts if there's any questions, and we'd be happy to take any questions from the board this time.
We do have some questions. Julie?
DeeDee, you spoke to this a little bit here in your last comments, but what my concern was, as we were going through, is I heard Michelle say that at the elementary level, that the spots were by invitation. And then, Lauren, you talked about at middle school level, some specific marketing. I just want to know how we're going to ensure that we fill all of the spots.
So, I'll speak to middle school first. So, we printed individual invitations for students that qualified, explaining why they qualified, where their summer school site would be, and all the details, as well as QR code and phone number for how to enroll. We had every school deliver those to the students for them to take home, and then that same day they got them, we sent them a parent link that said, hey, your student qualifies, check their backpack, and if they weren't at school today, they'll get it tomorrow, then the next day they come to school. The tough thing about the parent link system is I can't target one for you, Ms. Hetrick, right? Like, I have to send one to everyone that qualifies. And so, the reason the individual invitations were important is because, you know, maybe I'm a parent that has four kids. Well, which one of my kid qualifies? Do all of them qualify? Do some of them qualify? And so, that's why that individual invitation was so important. And again, we were so much further ahead in the planning, that we could tell you which summer school site you're going to. I mean, all of the information was all already right there, because I think that was a big hiccup for us last year, is people would be like, well, which, where will they go to summer school? Because we don't have all, you know, not every school is a site. And so, easing some of that fear and nervousness for the parents, and it's already paying off. We sent a follow-up parent link, hey, reminder, your student qualified, you know, that sort of thing. On the 27th of February, we're going to send another one on March 20th. Then, we've created, also with Mr. Dixon's help, a summer school enrollment hotline number that parents can call. It's 973-4400. That, that's how they enroll in summer school. And then, the ladies that we have, the temporary staff that are staffing that enrollment summer school hotline, are going to start calling all of the families that haven't enrolled their student, to say, hey, your student qualifies, would you like to sign up? I can sign you up right here, right now. I'm on the, while we're on the phone. And also, trying to collect data on if there's families that say no, why are they saying no? So that we have that additional data in regard to that. And I know that elementary has done very similar things, because we try to tag-team as much as possible, as much consistency as we can have, K-8, the better. But I'll let Kuda add in, I know you guys have done some more specific marketing around parent-teacher conferences, because they're a little bit different in elementary school than they are in middle school, that you might be able to speak to.
Well, let me do a follow-up question first, before we move on to Michelle. So, if some of those families say no, and now you've targeted all of your initial folks that qualify, and some said no, so you still have spots, will you, like, look at the next level of qualifications, and then try to get them to fill those spots?
I'm guessing we'll fill all of our spots with 3,319 kids that qualify, right? Because we, I mean, realistically, we're probably looking at anywhere from 800 to 1,000. That would be pretty feasible to serve, right? If we had 1,000, let's pretend we've got 250 kids at every site. Like, that'd be pretty, that'd be pretty substantial. And that would be, you know, 30% of our kids that qualified, that'd be a pretty big return, especially compared to last year. So, it's not trying to get to 100% of the kids that qualify, but can we at least get to 25, maybe 30% of the kids that qualify? So, that, that list is that list, but it's doing everything we can to get as many people off of that list into summer school as possible.
Thank you.
So, Lauren's right. In elementary, it looks a little bit different, but we definitely coordinated our process and how we would send out the parent link and have that letter ready, and then the flyer also. One thing is that we have, one thing that we knew this year, the teachers gave us some feedback in saying that, because we're using some risk in reading, and we did not include math. Where last year, we said you had to be some risk in reading and in math, but we went just with the reading. So, that extended our invite list to over 10,000 kids. So, all of them got the invite, but the teachers also received, these are your kids, the students in your classroom, that are invited. And then, they would say, well, you know what? I just had a kid come in in January, and I can tell you that this student would really benefit from being in summer school. So, they were able to add students to the list. They were able to say, well, you know what? This one's doing really well. I don't know that we really removed any, though. I think we mainly added kids. And then, they had the flyers and the brochures that marketing put together for us, and they delivered those at conferences and had one-on-one conversations with the families. And at that time, could give them a good idea, this is the site that your child will go to. And they are still, in fact, tonight, there's a lot of conferences going on in schools, so they're still having those conversations. Then, when the numbers come in, I can already tell you one of our sites is over our amount of seats. So, I've already worked with the principal, and we're looking on adding teachers and expanding that site to be larger. So, we're just monitoring the numbers, and like Lauren said, the ladies that are working this hotline, what a gift this has been for us. And they will be calling and saying, hey, your child qualified. And that way, we make sure everybody gets the message.
Excellent. Thank you so much to both of, well, all three of you. Ernestine?
The students, will it be this, in the, like, if they're, say, 5th grade this year, will they stay with the 5th grade program, or will they be a part of the middle school program?
They'll stay with 5th grade. So, they'll stay in the grade level they are this year.
Okay. And I heard you say about elementary had free transportation. Will middle school and high school?
Middle school does, high school does not.
Okay. Thank you.
At high school is so late, there's no way to pull off the transportation beast. So, we've, and I will, really, basically, it was, we will give up high school transportation to get transportation for these elementary and middle school kids, including field trips. So, there had to be a little bit of give and take there.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you, all three of you. This is encouraging, and it's even more exciting to know that you're ahead of the eight ball on this year. There's nothing worse than being behind the eight ball and the stress, and then you can't enjoy the process. So, kudos to you guys. I want to ask you, though, is there any data from last year's summer camp with the grades increasing in this school year right now? Have you been able to track that at all? Like, the reading, elementary, probably particularly elementary?
So, we were able to collect data that shows this amount of students, this is where they scored coming in. And then, when they started in the fall of the school year, same assessment, and be able to match that. There's so many variables that take place. For example, maybe the student was enrolled but didn't stay in summer school. There's just so many variables that we really do not have, like, this solid data that's going to show you that it truly impacted. But I can tell you that, just feedback from anecdotal feedback from teachers and stuff, it's that they notice a difference. And so...
Yeah. When we, what was it, September? When, when did we look, pull some data?
September.
That's six lifetimes ago. We did pull some data. The students that attended middle school, summer school, and elementary, actually, they, their attendance, attendance increased in the fall from last year. So, if nothing else, you felt more connected to school, and you started coming to school more. So, if, if that's literally the only thing we say we accomplished, I'll take it. That's, that's a huge win. One of the things we actually talked about in our summer school planning meeting today was the threshold for how many days you needed to attend for us to be able to pull your data and compare it. So, we talked about, we want kids that attend for this year 15 or 16 of the 16 days to really compare the data, because technically, if you only attend 14 days, you're chronically absent from summer school, because that would be 87.5% of the time. And so, 16 days is not a lot. But 16 days is better than zero days. And, and so, really, we wanted to, we put that threshold on there of, then at least we have a more tangible ability to say, summer school potentially correlated with this difference? Because when you don't do that, like Kuda said, what if, the average number of days a kid attended last year was 10? Granted, two of the days got canceled, so we really only had 14. But, and so, attending 10 days versus attending 14 days is very different. That's a, that's a week, that's a week you didn't go. And so, being able to better compare the data from before to now, but really, the comparison we have is spring test scores, so fast bridge, to, for middle school, to fall fast bridge. Also, knowing the time between, for the spring and fall fast bridge is substantial, including the entire month of July where they weren't in summer school, right? So, it's really looking at, what are the correlations? Because we can't draw any causations, because there's just too many things.
Follow-up, if I may. Last year, I was able to attend the summer school graduation. And did all of the students show up for that graduation, or were there some that preferred just to have their diploma mailed?
Oh, yeah, no, they don't all come.
Okay.
Yeah, it's voluntary, optional.
It's a big deal.
Lots of people do come.
Yeah.
But no, for the, the high school, summer school, the, it'll be June 22nd this year.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah, some kids are like, give me my diploma, I got what I needed, I'm out. And others want to have that moment of celebration publicly.
Yeah. Thank you so much for doing this. I think it's going to be a big impact. We're going to be able to see it a few years from now, but it's great. I'm very excited about summer camp, not school.
Diane?
Thank you, ladies. Once again, you did a great job. How, what is the total number of students that you're wanting to serve this summer?
You want to put all the programs together, DeeDee?
We will bring that back to you. Just because it has been a little bit of a moving target, I'll solidify those and send those your way.
Well, I'm, I'm looking specifically at the, at the slide where we've stated that 8,200 students were served last summer, and so, you've wanted to increase that. So, I just didn't know, is that a significant increase? Is that just, I don't need to, I'm not going to hold you to a super-specific number, but just a ballpark of, are we looking at 9,000 students or ish?
We, you know, with all the different programs that we have, and the capacity somewhat being based on, so, like, with extended school year, that is based off of, like, the number of students who have that service added to their IEP. And that can fluctuate 250 students to 600 students, you know? So, there's all those types of variables. Again, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I think last year, we said that there was, like, maybe 16% of, well, that was our overall population, but it was, I mean, it was down substantial from the students who actually qualified, because we served 8,000, but I think we had, what, around 16,000 qualify?
Yeah. And on the secondary side of that, yes, we want to increase, but we don't want to increase. And let me explain what I'm saying, right? So, let's use ELO, for example. I don't want more students that qualify for ELO. I actually don't want you to qualify for ELO. Or, if you qualify for ELO, I want you to do ELO, because then you don't have to go to summer school, because you did ELO. And so, I think that's also part of the murkiness in that, is like, yes, we do want to increase the percentage of students that qualify that we serve, but I don't want there to be a higher percentage of students that qualify, if that makes sense.
Great clarification.
But we know that we did have seats that were not filled. And the hard part about that, too, is, you know, we also had a number of students enroll, but not show. So, Michelle Kuda mentioned this, but we do have already recruiting efforts lined up to call those students who aren't attending on those first few days. So, those numbers are based again, you know, they vary, you know, depending on which, which sets you're looking at. But I will definitely pull some numbers together and send them your way, especially when we have some prelim numbers when registration closes on the 7th.
I'm seeing no other questions. Thank you, the three of you, very much. Dr. Thompson?
Yes, I'm going to kind of just, just support Kathy's question just a little bit, and talk a little bit about the purpose of summer schools. Summer school really is about stopping loss. That was what we were originally looking at, not only to stop in the loss, but also the decrease in summer slide. So, a lot of times, when kids don't have anything for three or four months, they slide. So, the purpose is really not to increase anything, it's really to stop the loss, or decrease, and decrease the amount of a slide that we have in the summer school, and then the engagement, which is connection and the attendance piece. So, for 16 days, you're not going to look to, to see somebody go from one extreme to the other. It's really to stop things, so that when they come back, they're not as far behind. It's really to stop things so that when they come back, they're not as far behind or they didn't slide further back. So you're just kind of stopping that gap there and creating opportunities for kids to stay in school, engage, um, and, and have fun. And then the other piece is then, when they come back, what you can see from the data that I looked at and we all looked at, you will see that we did stop loss and then there was decrease in the slide. And then of course, the attendance piece is what she talked about. So that's what data you'll see in summer school. So you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't, maybe some kids, a few kids maybe you saw grew, but really it's more around those three topics.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very, very much. We look forward to being able to visit the programs this summer. Next item?
My kids are too young for it. Hey, consider I knew you could pass it around.
All right, so we're really excited about, did you tell me, did you say next item superintendent? Oh, okay. Lord, I was going to say I'm being disrespectful. Okay, thank you. Um, I was looking, um, this next topic is really cool and, um, this was a request, um, from Ms. Stabler. She, um, was interested in esports and she made a, uh, she asked that we bring esports to the table for a presentation and discussion.
All right. Well, um, good evening, President Logan. Good evening, uh, Vice President Alberts, Dr. Thompson, Board of Education. Uh, this is such a unique thing. Uh, tonight, we just, Clint Dayhoff, who's in charge of esports for the district, and I just came from Wichita State. Their esports program just moved into the Corbin Center. So if you don't know, the Corbin Center's been under renovation and, uh, then, um, they've now moved it under applied learning. So, uh, WSU is recognizing that there's active learning happening within esports and it was great to both see, uh, former Wichita Public School students there, uh, but also just seeing, you know, such growth happening. I, Dr. LaFever and I were talking tonight and she was like, I remember when both of us were just looking at starting our own programs and, and we started funneling coaches through a program at Wichita State University. And it's so amazing to see a program grow as fast as this one has. So I wanted to actually start tonight by showing a video. Uh, I have, uh, two great people that will discuss kind of within their area what esports looks like.
Esports is just, uh, another great opportunity for our kids to get involved in, uh, in school, get connected and find, find something that they like, uh, that they can also be a part of a team. And, uh, that's where, you know, we see the biggest benefit from, from esports is just a, you know, another avenue that we can connect kids to school.
These kids have finally found their home in the school in a lot of cases. And you can find this example over and over at every single school has an esports team where there's a kid who's thinking about, I don't like school, I don't want to be here. And then a month later, through the esports program, they're dressed in school colors. They're going to the extracurriculars because they want to be at school and they're proud about their school because they've found a place that accepts them.
We've seen just constant growth in our, in our classes as well as with esports. I mean, even so much that we had, I think we had to turn away some kids, uh, in our esports program, uh, just because of just numbers.
You should just watch these kids. They are so excited to figure out what their plan is going to be and what strategies and plays that they're going to use within the game. And as a coach, you sometimes can just step back and just, the communication is at such a high level and the, like the activity, the mental activity that has to go into, the brain power that has to go into that strategy is, is exactly what we want these kids to be doing, um, in, in high school and, and later on in college and in their careers.
At West High School, we have a gaming concepts class. They work with, uh, you know, coding, problem solving, uh, the con, the sequencing of, uh, of the games. Uh, and, you know, it's a relevant class, it's a popular class and kids are enrolling in that and just increasing enrollment every year.
Gaming concepts allows them to be somewhat of an expert coming into this, but also we leverage that and start to show them other things in the academic realm. And it's just a fantastic tool to increase attendance, to increase their, um, school passion and, uh, to be the expert for the first time.
We've got to help our parents realize that, you know, this, this gaming is, you know, it's not just what we grew up with and you're just playing a game. This is, I mean, this is the real deal, you're problem solving, you're, uh, but it also gets into the coding and, you know, and it's a, it's a, it's a job and it's an employment opportunity for, for these kids and also a way to go to college.
So my first year of coaching was at Southeast High School. First year we play, $69,000 in scholarships was right off the bat. And that just shows you how much colleges are buying into this because they're getting pressured by, uh, companies because companies want to hire problem solvers and gamers are problem solvers.
They're connected. And so that helps them to drive that connection and helps them to drive to improve. It's no different than any other team sport that you participate in. Uh, so that is, uh, I mean, it's just, it's just awesome to see in, in action.
So, um, I apologize, I grabbed Wichita State's red folder, uh, instead of my red folder that has your actual slide notes, but I have tons of research here that I'll be handing out during this presentation. So, um, I will get you those slides. Um, when you look at this graphic, and I update this graphic every single year, and you see where our students enter technology, um, it's interesting to see how fast, uh, this advancement of technology has happened. When I look at myself, um, I was born in 1976. I came into technology in the military in, in, uh, 1995. And I, I tend to look at how, you know, I'm not a digital native. And yet my three daughters, uh, 20, 23, 25, they've even entered technology at different times in their lives according to this graph. So then now you fast forward to a primary school student, a kid entering kindergarten today, they have only known social media. They have only known this device that now does so many things for you, right? You think this is your alarm clock, this is your music, right? This is how you find your way to a location if you need maps. This is how you order food or order a Uber. So many different things have made this such a convenience for your life and our students don't know anything otherwise. And so there's such this pull, right? Of, we talk about screen time and how much screen time students have, and then you think about brain development and how students learn today. Um, I, I passed out this education week article that identifies and, and I would love, uh, for you all to, to read it at some point, but I'd love to highlight on the, uh, second page of that research. It says, "The results are helpful in shifting the narrative that video games are a waste of time for children and away from the knee jerk concern that they're linked with aggression or violence." Uh, but I think there's a growing body of research between gaming and brain development. And it, it doesn't establish a causal relationship. The findings were inconclusive on whether video games ca, uh, delivered cognitive benefits or if the children are already good at impulse control, memorization to seek out video games. One of the things that we're in the progress of right now is, uh, we have Wichita State University in a research study, year-long research study of our esports program. And that program is titled, "It Takes A Spark To Ignite A Fire: Developing Efficacy And Connections Through Esports." One of the things in the video that you saw tonight was the amount of connections that our students have to school because of esports. Um, I'll highlight, uh, at West High, last year, 60%, 62% of those kids had never got a letter before. And so we, we give the kids a letter just like they would any other varsity sport. And so we're reaching kids that we've never reached before. And I think these connections to high technology engagements, whether it be in computer science, which is being focused at the state level, whether it be cybersecurity, um, a number of the kids tonight at Wichita State, uh, were either in MIS, computer science, or cybersecurity. Like, the only other one was sports nutrition and the rest of them were all IT fields. And so when I look at those, it's like, there's such an importance of us connecting esports to, uh, how kids cognitively learn. So Clint, you want to kind of talk about how this all started?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me to talk about something I'm really passionate about, which is esports. And it didn't come from a passion of me playing video games. I'm a basketball player, the football, baseball, that was my hook to school. Um, I played some games here and there, but they weren't the same kind of games as our kids are playing now with numerous strategies, nu, numerous communication strategies. Um, you know, Rob talks a lot when we go speak about esports as we have kids that have created their own type of language to be able to communicate quicker in competition. And a, as he talked tonight, um, as we were at WSU, they talked about how the Navy and the military is starting to recruit because, recruit gamers, because these are kids who can think quickly, make decisions quickly, str, come up with a strategy of their own and, and that's things that the military's looking for.
We beat the Navy, by the way, last year. It was awesome.
Good shout out. So before I jump too much into the history, um, I want to highlight a couple of things that I'm super proud of from the fall. And this'll just kind of tell you where, how quickly this has gone in just a couple of years. So, um, Southeast High School, they won the Central Region High School Nationals in the fall, which qualifies them to go to the actual national championship in Kansas City, uh, where their kids will compete for actual scholarship money they can use. Southeast kids just a few years ago also won numerous tournaments. One of their players is one of the scholarship players that we met at WSU tonight and they had, that team had over $60,000 in college scholarship before they ever left Southeast that year. So not only to me is it a phenomenal opportunity for kids to, you know, have a link to school and be excited to come to school, but it's also a great opportunity for them to go earn money before they even ever get to college. Um, North High and East High both made the top eight in the game Valorant and West High also made the national playoffs. Northeast Magnet made the final four in Overwatch 2, which is another big game. It's kind of the three big games in the high schools. It's called Rocket League, Overwatch and Valorant.
And when we say national, these kids are competing against like sometimes over 2,000 teams. So when we say eighth, it's a lot. It's not like, it's not like just a local league.
Yes, and then, um, East High School made it to the national championship in the game Super Smash Brothers. They lost in the national championship. Um, but the point of all this is, so where we started, um, to, we started with just a couple of high schools, club, we were not involved basically at that point. They were really student-led and a volunteer that was their mentor. And, you know, we were lucky, Mr. Rob Dixon came in, he asked, "Our instructional tech team, does anybody have any gaming experience?" Well, I had taught game design at, uh, West High School and I was at Brooks Middle School a few years before that and I used to bring Nintendo 64s in and wheel in some big screens and just write like a basketball bracket on the board and the kids would play. To me, I just thought we were having fun at the time. That's nine years ago and all the way to, at, in reality, we were doing esports then, we just didn't know it. Um, so then we started building this program, um, and we started with four, or we started with five of our high schools just as a pilot to just kind of see how this went. And what we saw was what you just saw in that video. We saw kids getting excited to come to that class. We saw them really trying. We saw attendance starting to go up. Um, and so we thought, hey, there, there really is something to this. So that's when we really looked at, let's take it, try to take this district wide. Uh, we started building labs and Dr. Thompson had brought her strategic van over there and we had a great time. Um, I'm very passionate and I always have been about more fun. I feel like students learn more when they're having fun. And so that's always been, so it, it makes me happy to see this, this in action district wide because now we have a lab in all nine of our high schools. We have a 70-seat arena at Education Imagine Academy, um, which we're super proud of. I hope you'll come see it sometime. And then all 18 of our middle schools now have 20 gaming machines in those, in those classrooms. So we have competitive teams at all the high schools, um, we're competing at the national level with those teams. And then middle schools right now are run as a club. Um, so our high school coaches are paid. And something I have to say, shout out to all of my coaches, this program would not be anywhere where it is without the countless hours that they have spent building these programs up. I mean, they are phenomenal. Um, you know, Kyle is one that you saw who has really helped us build this because there's no, there was no roadmap, guidebook to how you start an esports program, you know? It was like, and that's something that Rob might talk about too, is this gives a kid a chance to fail over and over and over and that's okay. And that's where you learn and that's where you, like, you learn how to win from failing. And so that's something you can do in a game over and over and over. Um, so at this point, we compete nationally, uh, through high school esports league. And what sets us apart from some other districts is we also offer the gaming concepts course. And it's a phenomenal course that we have in all of our high schools, some of our middle schools. And, you know, it's just, it's a great thing and we love what we're seeing.
So some of the other areas, uh, you know, one of our students last year that ended up signing with WSU Tech, uh, she wasn't even a, a player in esports. She, she actually got signed in a scholarship, uh, just being a, a game manager. And so, uh, some of the areas that we also have students, uh, explore and participate in is video editing. Like when we have a, a tournament on a weekend, I've never seen 200 middle school families come on a Friday night to watch their kid play in an esports tournament at our, at our, uh, ISC building. It's amazing to see that. Uh, we raised funds, uh, this year, this last year for, uh,
Children's Miracle Network.
Uh, through those tournaments. Uh, but there's video editing, there's shout casting. If you don't know what shout casting is, it's, uh, kids building social skills by basically commenting on the game as it's going and live broadcasting that. So we, uh, each team has a Twitch, uh, channel and they have kids participate in shout casting. So we have a room, uh, as ISC, uh, right next door to our Overflow Center in 200 South. And those kids learn how to, in, si, building situational awareness, how to understand the play and, and understand how to comment on the play and go back and forth. And so, uh, those areas of whether it be graphic design or event management, we, Clint and I don't run those tournaments, those students run those tournaments and we just show up. And, you know, it's funny to see parents because I think one of the biggest things about this is awareness, right? Um, if I had to go around this table and say, what is your awareness, one to 10 of esports, uh, just in general, um, it would probably be fairly low. And the same goes with those parents, right? Many times they just see their kid closing the door and they're just gaming all the time. But what's amazing is when they come to a tournament and they see five-on-five or six-on-six and they see a Southeast team that has built their own language, like these kids are shorthanding language so that they can build strategy together in real time. The amount of planning and effort that goes into that is amazing, an amazing collaboration. Uh, our West High, uh, captain for Valorant, uh, she's a female. And it's amazing to see the diversity across all of those. College offerings?
These continue to grow and I, you know, they call our district constantly because they know we're, they're recruiting our kids. But it seems like every week there's a new college building an esports program. I took a lot of kids, um, in the fall to watch KU play K-State up at K-State and there was one of our East High players from last year on K-State's varsity team. So it's, it's just, it's amazing to see that. And, oh, and then Highland Community College showed up too because KU couldn't make it. And there was one of our players from West High on scholarship at Highland that came to play K-State. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a lot So, you know, it's, it's, a lot of them at this point are clubs, and they're growing, but more and more of them every day are offering scholarships. I mean, if you look at this list, and just tonight, we had one of our students from West High showed up, and I introduced him to the director of esports at WSU. They started talking about the future and what, what that student needs to do to get ready for their, to potentially be a part of their program. So, you know, it's those things that, that really get me excited. It's also giving a kid that connection to school and making them excited about school. That's what it is for me. You look at this map, and you'll see that this is, this is actually outdated. This is about a year and a half ago. There's been a ton more schools added since then, but this is the schools we compete against.
This is our league. So when you think about, this is not, you know, Kasia is not involved at this point. And so when we participate in High School Esports League, and so if a team wants to practice at night, they can set in HSCL's queue, and it, it's really round-robin for the time, right? Because it's hard to plan. But an East High team could play Fresno, California. We, we played Fresno several times. And they could, you know, in practice, have a practice at night with another team thousands of miles away. And you're having communication with that team, competition with that team, you're building relationships in many ways. And so, yeah, that, and, and us being able to compete at a high level with this amount of teams is astronomical to me. Like, we are the center. I mean, HSCL is based out of Kansas City. Wichita State Esports is building an amazing program. We could be the hub for esports in the Midwest at least, for sure.
And that has been our goal since the start, was let's be the Midwest hub. Let's, let's be the district that gets in on this early, and you know, and if you talk with people nationwide, they know about Wichita Esports. The other thing I want to highlight is, you know, for the, for the kids, this has turned into one of the most popular classes. We, if you think, let's talk about East High School right now. They offer Gaming Concepts every block of the day. And it, you know, the first year, or which was last year, that we started offering this course, we had 523 kids. This first, in the fall, we had 13, 28. We have waiting lists on, at almost every school because we just need to find a way to offer it more, and, you know, so it's something that they're, the kids want. And they're having a blast, and, and that's what we want. And they're learning these skills that are going to help them as they go forward.
One of the things that Kelly and I have been working on is writing with Clint and some of the coaches and our CTE folks, a Gaming Concepts II class. Because like, what do you do after this, right? But one of the amazing things that we're doing is building three new pathways in high-technology areas, whether it be cybersecurity, whether it be data science, or machine learning as an extension of computer science, with dual enrollment with Wichita State and, and WSU Tech. This Gaming Concepts, if you take Intro to Computing, which is that first course, and you mix in gaming concept strategies, and I, just reflection of that is listening to all those WSU kids, every single one of them are in MIS or cybersecurity, like, it fits the mold of what funnel and what exposure would you like to have kids in high-technology areas? With Integra moving into town, a microchip maker, you think about, we have a Security Operations Center on the top floor of the Epic Center right now that, that looks over a lot of different assets that I wish I could name publicly, but I can't. And so I think there's a lot of opportunities for our kids to stay in Wichita. And I think that's always a challenge, right, for Midwest cities, is keeping kids grounded in the community. And I think there are a lot of opportunities in these high-technology areas to keep kids here. Some other key points, I think, you know, when we think about connectedness, we think about, you know, what Lauren talked about with summer school and WSU Tech with those kids being in STEM areas. There's a lot of interdisciplinary things, whether it be the situational awareness in esports or exposure to simulation learning. So when I think about games now, when I grew up, it was like Nintendo, right? I, I had the same scenario over and over and over again, and I just memorized the scenario. It's not like that now. A kid's going to hop into a scenario, and it's a different environment, different situation, different players, every single time. Situational awareness is key in that measure to understand what's my challenge, what threats do I have, what strategy do I build? And, and there's an amazing amount of learning that happens through that. And if they can learn scholarship money along the way, I think it's huge. Our kids communicate today differently than we do. I'm used to calling somebody on the phone. I used to remember grabbing the phone off the wall and stretching the cord, right, around the corner so that nobody could hear me. And now every kid has a cellphone, and they use mediums to communicate emotion, whether that be a meme, whether that be an emoji, whether that be a GIF. All of those terms we've learned in our adult years. These kids have been exposed to these since they were born. And so, you know, I think it, it is true. Video games like traditional sports give kids a, a chance to respect their peers. And these kids that we see today, some of them have great social skills, some of them need to work on them. But esports allows the scaffolding and the exposure to all of that all at once.
It's such an accepting sport, our kids together. I just, I love going to the high schools and watching all, everyone coming together for this common goal of winning an esports game. And it's not always just about winning either. It might just be a fun competition they're having, or they're competing against, you know, east versus west, a little rivalry, things like that. But it's their status and how, like I told you when I first started, like, whether it's a traditional sport or an esport, that's who they are, that's their, who they are at school, you know? And that's how they get respect from their peers.
And I, I think you'll find from the WSU research study that you're going to see a mixture of kids both that play sports and still do esports, and a mixture of kids that weren't connected to school at all and are playing esports right beside those students. And so I think it will be an interesting report whenever we get that. I was flying into South by Southwest DDU when COVID hit, the day it hit. I actually landed, and they canceled South by Southwest DDU. I was, I was in a, in an Uber from Austin's Airport. And so I got the chance. One of my best friends is Snow White. She works for Dell. She's in charge of Instructional Technology for Dell. And Arizona State University was there. And so we met, and Arizona State has this problem-solving model. It's the six types of problem solving. So you look at this graph up here. Type one is the person delivering the math problem, or the problem itself, knows that there's one answer, and there's only one way to get the answer, right? So that's very easy level, like a math problem, right? When you get to level four, level five, especially level six, you're getting into a range of scenarios that might solve the problem and might not solve all of the problems. So like, a level five or level six is like a sustainable development goal or like climate change, right? COVID would be considered a type six problem. When I think about the future of problem solving, and especially where esports is, and building situational awareness, this is very much that area. We currently don't measure situational awareness in academia, right? We don't, how do we prepare simulation for a kid to understand how to react to an uncertain future? And I think it's great to see kids in esports can fail over and over and over again until they succeed. And the ability to fail is the reason why they succeed, right? And so I think those are the things that I'm most proud of that we do is both from an academic side and gaming concepts teaching strategy, and also from building, using gamification and challenging to help our kids build resilience. So I'll stop there for any questions.
We do have some questions. Kathy?
Wow, let me just kind of like let that soak in. My sons graduated in 2013 and 2015, and they're gamers, and they both went into the military. And they're still gamers, but they know how to discipline their time management, because this is something that I know kids can stay on 24/7 unless they have moms like me that say, "Get off and go to bed." I do have some questions. I think this is awesome. If I'm going to have to lean into a new form of education, with your excitement and your enthusiasm, I'm sold. But I want to know, is this a class or is this a sport?
So it's both. We have the class. That's our Gaming Concepts class. And then it's also an after-school sport at the high school level. So we have our competitive varsity team, our junior varsity team, for numerous different games. So that's the difference from a traditional sport. With esports, you might have four different games that that one school plays in, and then they have a varsity and a junior varsity for both of those, for all those games. But then we also offer the class, which is an elective class called Gaming Concepts, so we can teach those things, time management. We get health and fitness in there. We've put bikes at a lot of the high schools because we, you know, we don't, we don't want to have somebody gaming for eight hours straight, not getting up, moving around. So we always say, "Hey, if you're going to play for an hour, an hour and a half, jump up, ride the bike for 10 or 15 minutes. Get moving." I mean, even, so to answer your question, yeah, it's both. We have the Gaming Concepts class. We have that at the middle school and the high school level. And then we have competitive teams.
Are they graded in class? Is this a graded class?
It is a graded class.
So it can bring their GPA up a little bit, if they enjoy doing it. So which leads me into, if you're going to use esports as a sport, is there a GPA requirement for these students to be able to get on that team?
Currently, no, unless the school wants to set one. We're still not bound by Kasia for that. And I would say, in starting the program, it was important for us to be able to expose kids that we hadn't reached out to before. And I think if you want to improve attendance, put Gaming Concepts as the first class of the day.
Oh.
Right?
We need to talk.
I mean, I think there's, I think there's reasons, and when I think of intrinsic learning, like, a kid wants to learn in that class because they see relevance, right? If they're gaming at night, then they're, they definitely see the immediate relevance of going and being in that class.
Give a kid a headset with a microphone, and they're happy. Thank you, gentlemen. Very good presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Hazel?
Hi. So I was, I was fortunate to attend a conference where I witnessed your presentation with your lovely wife. And I had a very different, what my perception was of what esports. I thought kids were just playing games. I'm like, why are we doing that? We're wasting money. They play games all night at home. And after you gave your presentation at a national conference and really excited the audience and explained all the components and what you were doing and your enthusiasm, really got me excited. And that's why I wanted you to come and do this, to show that we, the misconception that we have as a community as to what esports actually is. I have, I was wondering, what is the cost of, of, do you have to pay for the games? Or how, how does that work?
Yeah, I'll address that. First off, thank you so much for the kind words. And, you know, as far as the cost, we, there's a couple of different ways you can do esports. So think about a Nintendo. Nintendos look different now than, than they did when I was growing up playing them. But a Nintendo, you're going to, you're looking at, say, 200, these are rough estimates, but say $250 for the Nintendo Switch is what they're called now, and then maybe roughly $50 per game. Whereas, so when we were planning this, we're going, okay, if we're going to have to buy that game at each and every school, times that by 27, when you talk about middle schools and high schools. So we went with the PC model, or, you know, a computer model, where most, 99% of the games that we play, basically, all the games we support right now are completely free. So you have that initial purchase, obviously, of the PC, which is going to be a little higher than the Nintendo, but you start making that back when you talk about we're not paying for the games. Now, there is a cost to compete in the High School Esports League on an annual basis, and so that's a cost there. But as far as the games, we've really tried to keep that cost down by going with games that are free.
So I've had the opportunity to, to visit several middle schools who have a real robust club. And I asked them about competition, and they said they weren't competing yet. Are there plans in the future to develop teams or conferences for the kids to compete?
Absolutely. I think, I think in the initial years, we wanted to try to build up our high school to where they're competing, and, and, and they're competing at a, at a great level right now. I think there's always been this, we, we, they compete citywide right now in our, at our central ISC, and we have those events throughout the year. But participating in something like HSCL, I think it's been something that we've just been trying to prove makes sense, and then building out from there, because it's, you think about it, students are exposed to so many different students and environments when you look at that map. If I were to go back to this map, and these students, if they were to participate even in, I'm getting there. This is High School Esports League. Middle School Esports League wouldn't look this large, but it's still, there's a lot of interaction that I would want to make sure that we, because we currently are trying out Gaming Concepts as a course in middle school level, but I would also want to introduce at grade level, like, what are the communication standards? Like, you think about a middle school student, that's the biggest change in a kid's life, right? Going from elementary to middle. One of the biggest reasons why Verizon Innovative Learning, you look at our 12 Verizon Innovative Learning schools, they only focus on middle school. Why? Because it's the biggest area of change in a little person's life is middle school. So many changes, you know, from a body, mental, all those pieces. And so when you look at that aspect, I would just want to make sure that we built the right classes to make sure that those kids can be successful. I think we'll get there.
Can I add something to that, too? So from the middle school standpoint, they offer the game Rocket League. It's called, we have the High School Esports League. You also have the Middle School Esports League. And there's a cost for that, but Rocket League itself is free to compete in. So my teachers in the Gaming Concepts class at the middle schools understand that. But part of the issue, and one thing, just to add, we're building this, but all of our high school coaches are paid, so they have after-school practice, things like that. Whereas the middle school currently, they don't get a stipend or anything like that. A couple of them do. That's kind of more up to the principal at that point. But there's leagues out there just like this. We're just, we're working towards that.
Good. I know they're excited and anxious to join a league. I just want to tell you that I was very proud to be there to witness this. And I think that esports is another best-kept secret that we have in our district, and we just keep learning more and more great things that are going on, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I, I did bring a jersey. This is, this is a jersey for EI Academy. Every esports team builds their own jersey. They design it, all the graphic elements and everything. And so this was EI Academy's this year. It's amazing to see how they own everything about it.
Ernestine?
Let me say off, starting off, I'm very taken and enthused about this, but I've had skeptic calls. And so I'm going to play the skeptic for a minute and let you answer so that it goes out to those.
I want you to.
Okay. First of all, I think it's a little bit unfair, but nobody ever says about football, "Well, how is that going to help them in a, in a career?" But people do about esports say, "Well, how's that going to help them with, you know, they're not going to game all the, and make money gaming." How, how, what are the things, the skills that you see that they learn by doing esports or the class or whatever that will help them with their future? or the class or whatever, that will help them with their future?
You know, I, I, one of my good friends is John Tomlin. He's at Wichita State University and he's at Nayar. And he goes, Rob, you give me a, you give me one of those esports kids and I'm gonna pair them up with a veteran manufacturer and help them to solve today's problems. And so I think one of the things that esports kids do in simulation over and over again is they build problem-solving techniques. So you think of all of the attributes that we need to solve a problem that we haven't necessarily solved yet. That kid is going to have the resilience to keep going at the problem until they have a solution. And it might be more than one solution. But I would say these students are amazing at just, here's an, here's a problem of uncertainty. And that student's going to throw a lot of different scenarios at it to, to solve it.
Rob, can you, can you talk to them about, I know that, I know the answer, but about the jobs that some of these kids can get?
Yeah, so Clint, go ahead.
I mean, just from being at WSU today, one of, what I, one of my favorite parts was, I went to talk to the team. And I, one of the first questions, so what game do you play? Most of them were not the actual gamers. So you had the content creators, you had the video production team, you had the shoutcasting team. So not esports, yes, it's about the games, but a huge portion of it is those skills that we're talking about. So learning how to talk in front of people and how to be a good team member and how to make a decision quickly. And, you know, these skills that we really want kids to leave our school district with and take with them is skills they can learn. You know, same with, with what I could learn in a traditional sport. How, what does it mean to be a good team member? Because let's face it, most, a ton of the jobs out there, you need to know how to work together.
Then you talk about video game programming. And if the kid wants to understand the backend of that video game, then they get into coding and they get into computer science.
Do you do, I was gonna say, that's the same thing they would learn in football, for example, or basketball. And so the question comes is why add this? But I want to come back and say, do they, do you teach programming within your program, within the esports? Do they learn computer programming or any of those particular skills that could be translated out of games to something else?
They do get exposure to basic programming, yes. It depends upon if you're setting up the environment. Like I would take Minecraft, for example. There's, there's block-based coding in Minecraft throughout the entire scenario. So it's like masqueraded as learning, right? So like, I, the kid doesn't understand what's going through the simulation, but they're actually doing coding in, in the scenario. So.
I have a grandson in Ohio that has been trying to talk me into playing Minecraft with him for two years. I haven't done it yet, but you've, you've about convinced me.
Diane?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. That was very informative. And I confess, I don't know that much about esports, but I do feel I have a better understanding about it now. But I think it's a, it seems counterintuitive to have video games as a positive sport that we're, we're fully embracing. And so thank you for clarifying a lot of questions. Thank you for painting a better picture of what it actually means and, and how that benefits our students as well. You guys have talked about tournaments and so people are new to this esports. So if they want, like to attend a tournament, how would they find out about that?
We advertise our tournaments to the schools. I guess we could advertise them centrally.
Yeah.
Haven't really.
We advertise.
We have a limited space for extra people. Like, if you come to ISC, we have literally over 70 esports stations ready for tournament play. Because, you might have to help me out. Overwatch is six-on-six valid.
Five now. They all kind of switched to five now.
So they're five-on-five. So two teams playing one another, 10 stations at one time. And then you've got seven different matches at one time happening. And there's a lot of, I wouldn't say chaos, but it's managed chaos within the day. It's a, there's a lot going on. If you haven't been to one, it would be, it's a lot. So. Yeah, I would say, yep, definitely, we have an overflow room.
And I'm working on a website right now that's gonna house all that type of information. We're making a little more forward-facing website showing all the cool stuff that's going on, you know, because we need to showcase that more.
I'm just surprised at the parent interaction. Like, I've never seen, I, I think it's because they have a curiosity, right? They're, like several others, they just don't understand. And so, but when they see physically five-on-five and the communication that's happening, they don't see that at home. And so that interaction, I think, builds confidence in, in what they don't understand.
Well, when you get your website up and running, let us know. And we would love to, love to showcase it, love to look at it, and I would love to attend a tournament sometime to get eyes on it. So thank you very much.
The fall open and the spring open are on high school esports league. And so when those open, they're like, ooh, 10 days?
The actual tournaments?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll, and those come out as we qualify for them. But, I mean, I do know we have turn, the ma, the big tournaments are May 5th and 6th. So May 5th is our city league, middle school Rocket League championship. And the 6th is our high school Valorant championship, which Valorant's our biggest game. So.
Can you make sure you give that, send that to Patrick?
Absolutely.
So that he can put it on the calendar for the ward?
Absolutely.
How many, how much did we raise last year during that tournament?
Last year, we were right around 4,000. It was our first year, our first year working with Extra Life and Children's Miracle Network. We're gonna blow that way out of the water this year and make a massive event for Children's Miracle Network.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think this is an area where we all needed more information and we have it now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, Patrick?
Next item, consent?
Hazel, do you have anything to pull tonight?
I have nothing to pull.
Kathy?
I have nothing to pull.
Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Diane?
Nothing.
And I have nothing to pull. Stan?
No consent items to pull.
Ernestine?
Nothing to pull on consent.
You all are making my job easy. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, I heard Julie made the motion and Ernestine seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next item?
Next item, under finance, budget report?
You had a long trip down from up there in the, in the, the early rafters.
And, and following esports with budget, that's not very fun. Thank you. Thank you for that. So, good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Thompson and members of the board. Tonight, it begins the budget presentation season. And I am going off my normal script, which would usually be to give the board kind of a lay of the land of where we are budget-wise to date and then start through the whole planning process. But tonight, the purpose of this presentation is to give the board some foundational information regarding capital outlay. And the reason for this foundational, foundational information is we hope to be bringing to you next, in the next month or two, some information from the facilities assessment report. And that, that's work that's been going on within the facilities department for a number of months now. And so this will provide you just another lens to look at that, that information coming out of that report with what we have available through capital outlay. So I'm gonna start tonight with kind of just some foundational pieces regarding capital outlay as a fund. So there, Kansas State law allows for school districts to assess local property tax for the purpose of funding capital outlay expenditures. So, and imagine all school districts do this. So we're just one of, of, of the, of the school districts in the entire state that has a capital outlay fund for capital outlay expenditures. This is a restricted fund. You cannot pay for certain types of expenditures outside what's listed in the statute. So you can't pay for teacher salaries out of capital outlay. You can't pay for business operational-type expenditures out of capital outlay. It's very specific in the types of expenditures, and we'll go through that definition here in a minute. In 2005, state law set the cap for capital outlay as far as the number of mills that can be assessed in the capital outlay fund at eight mills. So when I bring that recommendation to the board annually, that we maximize our, our mill levy at eight, it's because that's the maximum allowed by state statute. In 2005 also, during a special session, the legislature provided for equalization in state, of state aid to help school districts who were not able to raise enough property tax compared to their peers. So for a few years, Wichita didn't actually meet the criteria. And we, when we did, for several years during the Great Recession, the legislature didn't fund it. So there were a number of years where we did not get any equalization. And then in 2015, that was funded. In 2016, the legislature changed the formula and we didn't receive any equalization that year. Then it was found to be inequitable under Gannon, and so they changed it back to the original formula. And it's been funded ever since. So we, and we'll go through what that equalization looks like for Wichita. So we talked about that definition. For capital outlay, the allowable uses include the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair, remodeling, additions to furnishing, maintaining and equipping buildings necessary for the operation of school districts. That in 2013 was amended to include the acquisition of computer software, the acquisition of performance uniforms, some architectural expenditures, building sites and some asbestos projects. And that 2013 change is important to the district as we especially use that computer software during the 2015-16 timeframe. And we'll, we'll, we'll show you the impact on the capital outlay fund of that change. But we'll, we'll start first with looking at kind of the general revenues that go into capital outlay. So the primary revenue driver in capital outlay is property tax. And we typically will collect in current year taxes almost $26 million through that eight-mill mill levy. We collect another quarter million in delinquent property taxes. And then we have a little bit of interest that flows through to this fund, motor vehicle tax, some federal funds primarily through E-Rate, which is the connectivity grant through the FCC. Kind of a miscellaneous, not quite a million, at least for this year, in things like sale of a piece of property, those type of things that we anticipate. And then we receive about $12 million in state aid. Our equalization factor runs anywhere from 42 to 46 to 48%, depending on where everyone else falls in the state. So that, the median, the median assessed value per pupil across the entire state gets 25% of their property tax in state aid. That's how the formula works. If you fall below the median, you get an extra percent for every $1,000 you fall below the median. And so we fall below the median, so that's why we're in the 40, 40 and change. And that equates to us around $12 to $13 million of equalization aid every year. From that money that comes into capital outlay, we make allocations to various departments. So from the board perspective, when you see items on the, on the consent agenda, for example, that say capital outlay funds, it's coming out of their allocation, that particular department. Within their allocation, they've got a lot of flexibility to move their pieces around depending on their needs. But their allocation typically does not change during the course of the year unless something just really out, out of, out of the level of expectation happens. But that's, that's why from time to time, something new might, might pop into the consent agenda or a presentation's given, capital outlay funding is used. But that's typically because they are making adjustments within their allocation in order to fund their project. So this year's allocations, you can look to see where money had kind of landed. A big chunk of it lands in software and hardware. And we did this in 15 to avoid cuts in the general fund. This was the year where the, where the state moved to the block grant. And Bay State Aid was 3852 a student. It had been that way for at least a year. And we had kind of plateaued there for a number of years. And the district was facing significant budget cuts. In order to keep those cuts away from the classroom, we moved expenditures out of the general fund and the local option budget into capital outlay where they are now allowable in order to provide the services most needed at the classroom. The downside of that action, obviously, was its impact for capital outlay to be used for the support of our buildings. And thus we began kind of a deferred maintenance problem because that's 39% of our capital outlay funding going to support information technology-type expenditures. And you can see where the other allocations fall. We give a half a million to CTE, 1.2 approximately to safety and environmental, a little bit for furniture and equipment for schools. There's about $3 million of, of just capital outlay-type salaries running through this fund. And then we give design and construction, give or take about $21 million to do those deferred maintenance-type of projects. So that's kind of revenue in and money going out. To kind of compare that to where cash reserves in this fund are maintained, this chart shows you expenditures per year compared to those cash reserves. And for the most part, they, they kind of bounce up and down for a few years. But you can see in that fiscal year 15, where the expenditures kind of really accelerated up the, the table. And you can see where cash reserved kind of bottomed down. And that was the year we moved all those software expenditures into the fund. And then we started to kind of have to build back up the cash reserves in this fund in order to pay expenditures in the fall. So I want to kind of show you the next chart and we might come back to this one. But the reason the fund needs cash reserve, there's two reasons. This first chart shows that timing of revenue is, is a significant issue for the capital outlay fund. That fund receives 88% of its revenue in January, February and June, which means we have to get from July to December with no real significant funding going into capital outlay. So we have to have enough cash that we can actually fund some projects or we're kind of, still, we can't, we can't go out and, and purchase equipment. We can't purchase supplies for the projects. We're just kind of waiting for the funds to come in. So this fund has to have money in order to do the things we need done at schools. If we go back to our chart. Oops, wrong way, sorry. I did, I was backwards when I meant to go. So you can see our expenditures after, after that fiscal year 15 spike dropped significantly because we didn't have enough cash in the fund to fund projects. We were waiting. And so we dribbled out just enough for them to kind of make their payroll and they couldn't start doing any work until January. So we spent the next few years building those cash reserves back up. And then you start to slowly see expenditures coming back up in those outlying years. And that's why having cash reserves and capital outlay is so critically important. Otherwise, really no major work is getting done for six months out of the year. The other primary reason we look at cash reserves is, it is a fund besides contingency reserve for items that are somewhat unexpected. So the East High Restoration Project, that was not part of the $21 million that we give to facilities. That wasn't part of their plan. Now, we work together, right, to say, what can you pull out of your plan to help fund that? But there has to be another resource to go to, because what if that, if that happens in March, he's three-fourths of the way through his projects by that point. So we have to have some ability to hit some other funding in capital outlay for those unforeseen major renovation-type of projects that come up from time to time. The North High Tower Restoration Project was similar. And then the, when the safety grant came up, that was kind of a late notice. came up, that was kind of a late notice in the end of that last fiscal year. So, we, we were able to pull some of those reserves to start saying, safety, let's match the safety grant, and then let's map out our strategy of catching up on some of those safety projects. So, that, that, those reserves, we budget for them, but they aren't allocated out, they're kind of sitting on the sidelines to see if some of these emergency, or if the board directs us to, to make a capital outlay type purchase, we've got the authority to do so. But really, that belongs to the superintendent, and I assist with that as far as we know it's budgeted, we know we have that authority, but we don't necessarily give that to anyone else unless some major project has come up that we weren't planning. So, that might bring up the question is, well then, is capital outlay sufficient to meet our needs? And that is, that is a multimillion dollar question, right? The SIR funds, no doubt, have helped our situation. The 80 million or so that we have targeted for air quality type of maintenance projects has helped significantly. But there are hundreds of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance. At least five years ago, I think we were quoting in the 200 to 250 million dollar range. You can imagine that has only gotten worse. So, you can, you can kind of have a sneak preview of, of what's coming towards you in the facility assessment report. 20 to 25 million dollars of spend that we allocate to facilities is not going to get us towards a break even point on deferred maintenance. We're going to have to look at other alternatives if we want to gain some ground here. And for us, a big issue there is our size and the age of our buildings. We have almost 1,800 acres of property, 10 million square feet. Our oldest high school was built in 1922. Our oldest middle school was built in 1918, and the oldest elementary is 1910. That was the year the refrigerator was invented, to just give you a concept of how old some of our buildings are. Our newest school, Southeast, even that is seven years old now. So, the time just tends to fly, but certainly when we're looking at buildings, we have, we have some age issues. And this is not unique to Wichita, it's not, not unique to schools across the country. 25% of schools were built before 1950. 47% between 50 and 67, kind of when boomers were hitting, when we're hitting kind of that K-12 age. So, the bulk of our schools were built before 1970, as far as public schools concerned. So, this is not unique to us. Everyone struggles with aging buildings. If you look up on the Federal Department of Education, their recommendation is that after 60 years, you start divesting yourself of these older buildings because they're expensive to maintain. And to give you an idea of the average age in our feeder patterns, the West High feeder pattern and the North High feeder pattern, the average age of buildings in those feeder patterns is 77 years old, and we go down from there. The newest would be in the high speeder pattern at 37 years. So, we wanted to bring you this lens, this perspective of capital outlay that you can kind of digest and get ready to hear kind of the next section of information here in a month, month and a half, related to kind of more specifics on these building needs as we, as we look at kind of our takeaways from tonight. Capital outlay fund as a fund exists for the purpose of maintaining school facilities. The district takes in anywhere from 40 to 45 million dollars in capital outlay revenue annually, and we allocate those funds out primarily to technology, CTE, safety and environmental, and capital projects. Tech expenses, again, were moved into capital outlay in 2015 to prevent classroom cuts, but have depleted the funds available for capital needs, especially as our tech needs have increased. You heard, and you saw Rob's chart, so you know exactly why we're somewhat in the boat we're in, is technology is now everywhere. We've had to work on our wireless access points, our connectivity, all of those pieces are very expensive and have to be funded, and we don't have the ability to move those funds back into the original funds because we've made growth, but we've had other needs arise. So, we're still living with those fun, with those technology expenses primarily in capital outlay with no really other place to live. The cash reserves in capital outlay are necessary for cash flow purposes and to make sure that we can address those issues that come up that are unplanned and unforeseen. And then, the current capital outlay revenues and spending levels really are not going to be sufficient to make significant headway with deferred maintenance, even with the SIR help due to the age of buildings, the amount of square footage, and really the backlog that we have. And so, with that lens and those pieces of information, kind of a short presentation tonight, but I wanted to have, make sure you had this, and I'll stand now for any questions.
I'm sorry, Stan?
Yes, thank you, Susan. I remember when we were entering the summer of 2020, we discussed among ourselves a lot about cash reserves, and our cash reserves were too low, but also understanding that cash reserves is a tricky business because you do not want to just tax people without a purpose. And so, with this presentation, how did we get our cash reserves up? But I'm assuming there's really two cash reserves that we're talking about. Tonight, you've talked about capital outlay cash reserves, but we also have reserves in our general fund as well, correct?
Well, the general fund itself has to, by statute, end at a zero balance. But we do have, we do have money now in contingency reserve, and kind of at the low point of the district's kind of struggle through that Great Recession, those, that contingency reserve had dipped to a 10 million range, and for a district our size and with our budget, that was significantly too low. So, we have, we have kind of shored that up over the last few years. But primarily, what has happened in capital outlay was the re-implementation by the state legislature of state aid equalization, so that was number one. The fact that really since 2017, we've had pretty good property growth, property valuation growth, which has helped the fund kind of raise with its eight mills, it has been able to raise a little bit more money each year. And then really, kind of in those early years, somewhat tight management of projects while we did get the cash flow situation back under control. And in fact, I think I had shared with the board, really, that was right when I was starting, and so I was very nervous about capital outlay. And so, I was probably not, I was probably a little bit too conservative for a few years there. I'm sure the facilities people would, would look like that money, and I could look back and say, sorry, sorry, I was like that. But the, yeah, but, but I do feel we're, we're in a good place now where we can provide that kind of stable amount for projects, and we, we don't have to worry that we are holding until December, January, February to start projects out. We can basically roll right through, and even that will work out over the 12-month period.
So, let me make sure I've got the terminology down correct then. When you say contingency fund, reserve, you're talking basically capital reserve, capital outlay reserve funds?
So, there, the contingency, the contingency fund lives outside of all other funds, and it is truly unplanned, unbudgeted, just, it's just there for catastrophic type events. The reserves that sit-
Which can be used for capital, or it can be used for general.
There is no restriction on contingency reserve. It can be used for capital, it can be used for whatever your needs are. The capital outlay fund itself, we do keep some level of cash reserves in that fund in order to make sure that we have enough funds at the front side when there's no cash coming in to pay the bills.
So, when we occasionally hear a difference of opinion about what school districts, not just ours, but in Topeka, when you hear arguments about cash reserves, are we, are they talking majority of time about capital outlay, or are they talking about contingency, or both?
Usually, when, when KSDE is looking at cash reserves and giving that information out, they don't typically include capital outlay.
Okay.
Because it's, it really, that fund is meant to be more long-term in nature, you are looking at projects that have a useful life. They're looking at what funds do you have sitting in contingency, what funds do you have sitting in like nutrition services, or, well, not necessarily nutrition services, that's federal, but the other funds where you might have had an end of your cash balance. But again, in our, from our perspective, and we've shared this, and I could bring an update, and I will bring an update back to the board on cash reserves, un, it's, those dollars are not unplanned. We know exactly where every other dollar outside of contingency reserve is going. We have a plan for it. It's, it's either budgeted into the following year, or there's, 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 there is a plan, or it's, it's health insurance reserves, or something like that. We know exactly its purpose. The contingency is the only one that doesn't, that doesn't have a purpose, and that's, its purpose is for unplanned expenditures. So, again, from a size of budget, we, we fall very much in the middle of Kansas districts. We're not low, but we're definitely not on the high side. We're really right in the range KSDE would want us to be, and when you look at us compared to other large urban districts, we're probably a little bit on the low side, but we're, we're, we're in much better shape now, and I feel a lot more comfortable where we're at compared to where we were a few years ago.
And it is a, it is a tricky balancing act. I appreciate you clarifying that for me in my mind, so that the next time there's a conflict issue about reserves, I'll have a better understanding. But I, I've always said, the one thing that we, as a Board of Education, we, the public will forgive us for a lot of things, because we do make mistakes. But what they will not forgive us for is if we have an emergency come up, and they, and we, our official answer is, we don't have the money to fix that emergency. So, I appreciate, and I think this board needs to stay on that track of making sure we have that good balance on reserves, so that when we do have emergencies, because life is going to happen, and there will be emergencies, and we have to be fiscally responsible to be able to deal when those emergencies come up. So, I appreciate you clarifying all that for me.
Diane?
Yeah, I think you kind of answered one of my questions there, Stan, so thank you. My other question is, when we put in, you talk about the software and the hardware being moved into capital outlays, was it both the software and the hardware in 2015? Or just this, okay, so it was both of those?
Yes. More software at that point, hardware has kind of, we'd had a little bit, but hardware has somewhat followed as we've had all of those expenditures and software programs, and all the support pieces have all come up. Because right now, that hardware includes the lease payment, which we did not have back in 2015.
Okay, okay. I think that answers my question.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
So, the million dollar question, literally, the million dollar question, many million dollars questions. If the current capital outlay revenues are insufficient to make significant headway with deferred maintenance, then how are we going to come up with revenue to make significant headway?
So, and I think we've referenced this, at, at, at least I've referenced it in other presentations, is as the board hears all the pieces of information we've been presenting since last July, August, when we, we talked about enrollment, and we've talked about kind of your, your, kind of how the school makeups have changed as far as where students go, where the pockets of, where we might be a little bit overfilled versus underfilled. And when you hear this facilities assessment, you know, my hope is we start to take a longer look approach as far as, you know, if we cannot sufficiently fund where we want to go as a district, then what are other options? And certainly, you know, the discussion around a bond planning process, I think, would be, you know, something the board should consider and have discussions around. There's a lot of work and, and planning and exploration that would need to happen regarding that. So, at some point, we would probably look to the board to provide us some direction if they're ready for that exploration piece to begin. But that would be certainly kind of following some of this other information that's coming to your, to you for consideration.
This isn't directly related to what you're saying right now, but I would like for you to repeat something that you've said before. And just this past week or two, most residents of Cedric County have gotten their tax assessments, or more specifically, their, their house appraisal. On neighborhood and Facebook and a lot of those things, I see people going, oh my gosh, my appraisal has gone up. And I saw some of them that were saying, it must be the public schools. I quick jumped on and said, no, 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 we did not raise anything. But I want to have you explain, again, at this time, when the public is all dealing with those papers that have come in their mail, how that the, when we have eight, eight mills, how that is related in any way to their, their property tax.
So, the Cedric County Appraiser Office does that, right? We have zero to do with assessed valuation, nothing, not, no conversation, we don't talk to each other about it, we are not involved, that is not us. However, we are going to be on the receiving end of the benefit of that increased valuation for the eight mills as far as what it will collect. So, if you think about what eight mills on current-
Say a $100,000 house, eight mills would get us so much tax money.
Right, right.
But if suddenly, because of the-
If that goes up 5% over the county, we're going to get 5% more in capital outlay because, not because we did anything, but because that same tax effort then now collects more tax dollars. That goes back to that whole revenue neutral process, which we will talk about in June, which again, we, where we can, where we can look at, by pulling back on the mill levy because the assessed valuations have gone up, we do that. We do where we can. I just presented, though, why that's very difficult in capital outlay to come down to say seven and a half mills when we're at a minimum probably three or four or 500 million in deferred maintenance. So, we, we do acknowledge that when assessed valuations go up, that typically will mean more tax dollars at the same millage, and where we can come down, we make that recommendation to the board. But where we really would recommend you not move it would be one, and capital outlay would be one of those areas, we will tell you why, and we will get the evidence why we, we would, we would just dig ourselves a deeper hole.
So, if someone's house was 100,000, and then suddenly, because of the big real estate market, and all the evaluations have gone, is now at 125, their taxes would go up, but not because we've raised any taxes.
Correct.
It has to do with their past value.
And, and that is, that is where, again, kind of depending on your point of view, if you are an anti, anti-tax, right?
Anti-tax.
Not necessarily, it's negative, it's just you do not like taxes, and really, who does? You know, that, that, right, that the, that, you could say, well, that's a tax increase. And it is, but we did not raise a millage to get it. So, then we have choices, right? We're either, we keep our mill levy the same, and we collect more tax, we reduce the mill levy and collect the same tax, or we further reduce it and collect less tax, and we have consequences for each one of those decision points.
But just as, as the homeowners' price values go up, the price of everything that we buy and use in our schools goes up.
Yes.
And so, we also have to have more money just to stay even, just as households have to stay.
Right. Just as we are receiving an inflation factor on the Bay State Aid per pupil, the, the only way to assess an inflation factor is to collect on that eight mills that appreciation. And that's part of the story of why we continue to kind of get a little bit deeper, is that sometimes that appreciation does not equal inflation, sometimes it's better than, but in right now, it's going to be somewhat less than that's been last year, and maybe to, I don't know what this year's will look like, but, and the fact that the buildings are aging and getting, you know, more expensive to support.
Thank you.
I have a question. The mill levy that we currently assess, we're at the top of our-
The mill levy that we currently assess, we're at the top of our mill levy ability to assess at thirty-two, is that correct?
We, we have, we're top for capital outlay. We are, we, we are, we are maxed at the LOB. So we assess the mill levy based on the maximum local option budget and we are at max. So we cannot, the mill levy will vary a little bit depending on how much is left unspent this year that we can apply to next year. But we don't really control that. That is, that is defined by the thirty-three percent of the general fund, whatever the tax effort is to get that thirty-three percent. The only one we really have control over is bond and interest. And again, we're not going to assess, you know, a lot more than what we have to pay or that's going to be determined by our debt load. So really, the, there's not a lot, we have a whole lot of flexibility on anymore. And certainly that twenty mils that the state assesses, we don't have any control over that.
Yes, that goes to the state directly?
Yes.
And then they give it back to us and?
That's how they fund state aid, base state aid.
Okay, and the eight-mil cap came on in two thousand five.
Yes, it had been four and before two thousand five, and that was increased to eight.
Okay, and there is no talk, I assume, of increasing that in Topeka?
Not, no, the, the only thing I, that we continue, we collectively kind of, public ed in Kansas, and it's not on capital outlay, it's typically on, on the bond and interest state aid because they did change that law. When we get to that point, the state aid that we received on our bonds before two thousand fifteen was at a fairly high percentage of state aid equalization. Now that is a much lower number. So that will be a factor as far as the level of debt the board is comfortable and how much we would want to assess a tax, our taxpayers.
And, and out of that eight mils, when we move technology into the capital outlay fund, because the law changed and allowed us to do that, currently that's pretty close to twelve million dollars that's coming out of capital and going into technology.
Yes.
So we do have control of moving that somewhere else. But the problem is there is no somewhere else that it can be moved to.
Right, there's not twelve million dollars of unallocated funding sitting in another fund. Everything is budgeted. So we would have to then start to have discussions on what you didn't want to do in order to move that out of capital outlay into those other funds.
That's right. It would take stopping something or cutting something in order to be able to, to move that back into the general fund.
Correct.
Okay, and, you know, we, our bond, we passed a bond quite a while ago.
Two thousand?
And, and we are, we're still paying on some of those bonds.
We are.
But it's down from where it was.
Yes, we have three issues left outstanding at around two hundred and thirty-six million dollars left to pay.
Okay, well, this gives us the lay of the land to think about and try to figure out what we do. So I see no other questions. Thank you very much for a good report.
Thank you, Susan.
Next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
I have nothing, thank you. Next item?
Next item, Board of Education, report and requests.
Ernestine?
Oh, I wanted you to start the other end.
Next week, next time.
Hazel, I was hoping that you would start because what was the name of the organization that we went to, the breakfast that?
Assistance League.
Assistance League, thank you. I was having a senior moment or, anyway. We just had a wonderful time with the Assistance League members who invited us to come and have breakfast with them, have lunch with them. This is a group that provides help to our students everywhere in any district, I mean, in any school that where a student is in need. They take students shopping to, who, when they like need shoes, they help to find winter coats for those who don't have winter coats. There's just a wonderful amount of money that is raised and they have a shop across from East High, a thrift shop that has really fine things. And they are encouraging us to go shopping there. And I'm encouraging the public to go shopping there because this was really a wonderful opportunity. That's the best thing that I've done, so I'll just stop there.
I would just again like to thank the board for the plaque, the two years of being president. I just wanted to just quickly say that that was, that was an all honor for me. It was the, one of the wonderful two years of my life that I'll never forget. But I forgot that I thanked my, forgot to thank my family for the patience they showed me for the last two years. But I also appreciate this board patience and grace they showed me during those two years, so thank you.
Diane?
I actually joined Ernestine at the Assistance League lunch and East High Culinary Arts also provided the lunch for us. And so they made three different types of sandwiches and they also made the bread for the sandwiches. So that was fun to see the different types of bread, the different types of sandwiches that they provided, and everybody enjoyed the lunch quite a bit. So instead of giving a list of what I've done, I, I really wanted to bring the focus back to academic outcomes and improvements. And I, I spoke with the principal at Gordon Parks Academy, Latonya Kennedy, and she informed me of some good news happening in her building. And the eighth-grade students at Gordon Parks Academy had the greatest decrease of students who are required to take the fundamental math as freshman students next year. And so these students are better prepared for their high school career. The other celebration is that for the first time in ten years, that Gordon Parks Academy has been removed from the comprehensive instructional support list for the state of Kansas, which is based on a three years of growth on the state assessments. And the last three years that those state assessments were measured were twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. So for the school to have academic improvement during COVID is, is something to be celebrated. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, to the students, to the families and the community for all of their hard work and dedication and support that they are clearly displaying there. And so thank you to Gordon Parks Academy, but I don't want to just, I don't want to leave out the other schools that were off the list as well. The same schools that, the schools that are joining Gordon Parks and being removed on that list are Black, College Hill, Irving, Minnehaha, Washington, and Northwest. So thank you to those schools and all the staff and hard work and dedication that are being displayed there.
That is good news.
Julie?
Yeah, I have no report or request tonight.
Okay, Kathy?
No requests, but I do have report. I was able to go into Bostic Elementary and read the fourth grade class about the American Revolutionary War and Mr. Lafayette, who, because it was Black History Month and he played a big part in the war in helping George Washington. And so that was very interesting. I attended Northwest High School's JR OTC Military Ball and was presented a plaque of appreciation from the battalion. So that was a surprise and it was fun. I attended the All-City Honor Fifth Middle and High School Music Concert. And if you were there, the very last number where the middle school and the high schools performed together, it was absolutely, I mean, I videotaped it and I went home and I just kept listening to it. And of course, I was visualizing my boys because they sang too when they were in school. But, you know, music is so incredibly important to, to our world actually, but to our schools. It's just, it is an expression of self and I, I love our, our arts in our schools. I met with, I'm a newly appointed member with Pando, I sit as an ex officio, and I'm very excited to learn more in detail about the help that they're giving our students in our school district. I attended the breakfast for the Teacher of the Year, or should I say several Teachers of the Year, different districts, and that was exciting. Even if Wendy did like get the brothers, you know, it's all good, Wendy, we're with you. The last thing that I really want to talk about, I'm really excited about this. I'm a red coat ambassador with the VA, the Robert Dole Center. And I had an opportunity to take a group of high schoolers from Newton on a tour of the facility and one of the departments was the OR. So we got all, you know, dressed up in our hazmat suits and we were able to go in there into a mock-up surgery and actually utilize and use the machine with robotic surgery. And I knew that Kelly was talking about expanding the Future Ready Center with Health and Science, and I told him I had connections and so I would get him a tour there also to be able to experience it and see it. So the vision is there to bring to our students. And this is very exciting that I got to see it and I actually say, hey, I got something I want to show you. So I, I don't feel like, you know, anyway, it's, it's really exciting to see where our, our district is going to be moving into that direction and I'm, I'm just really excited to be a part of this. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Hazel?
I'd like to say the Assistance League that Ernestine was talking about, I actually met a family that they didn't have a refrigerator and the Assistance League took the family and got them a refrigerator for their home. So they really do help our, our students and our community. I had the opportunity to go to Pleasant Valley Middle School to meet and greet the incoming sixth graders for next year from the various feeder schools. And that was a really great experience. I got to see some of the kids that I visit at, at the feeder schools. I attended a family night, game night at Washington Elementary. They had a great turnout, a lot of parents, and they said it was a really great turnout of newcomers. So that was a great experience. I attended also the All-City Fifth Grade and Middle and High School Concert. And I can tell you that when the middle school started singing and presenting that I couldn't believe they were middle schoolers. It was pretty amazing. I toured Lowbiter, that was another one of the additions to my District Six this, this year. So I had a really nice tour there. I dropped in at Franklin and Cloud and I also attended the Teacher of the Year Breakfast and it was exciting to meet the recipients of the awards and I have no requests.
Great, thank you. Several of you have mentioned the Assistance League and that organization I happen to be a member of because I really do support what they do. They give lots of things to our kids, time, money, scholarships, new clothes. It's not a used clothes, it's new clothes that they get for the kids. So if, if anybody wants a good organization to volunteer for, that's a good one because it's all run by total volunteers. No one is paid. I, as many of us, were at the K-TOY breakfast, the Kansas Teacher of the Year team was in Wichita and toured some of our buildings. We also, many of us, were at the distinguished classroom teacher recognitions. We had surprise visits for those eight teachers that are just absolutely outstanding. And they'll be the ones that the people that we nominate for Kansas Teacher of the Year, they come out of that pool of teachers. We'll actually get to see all those teachers next month. They're part of our good news on our agenda. So that's, it's a fun time of year to recognize great teaching and great teachers. So with that, I, Ernestine, you have something?
Well, I was talking about here in our district, but I wanted to say that I was on a panel to a, a public meeting talking about what's good about Kansas education. And I wanted to tell you, thank you to Dr. Randy Watson, who gave me some good stats, but also I did, you know me, I had to toot our horn because, remember?
He who-
He who tootheth not his own horn, get his own horn not tootheth. So I did have to talk about Wichita. But I did want to tell you some stats on the state of Kansas. This past year, last June, we had the highest percentage of students graduate from Kansas schools ever in Kansas history. In addition, within that category, we had the highest number of students with disabilities graduate that had ever been in Kansas history. See, there was one more. Oh, the highest number of students with, yes, with, English as a second language. English learners graduate from high school ever in history. So the Kansas schools are doing pretty well right now and I'm real proud to be a part of Kansas and a part of Wichita Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, new business?
I'm seeing none, next item?
Next item, executive session.
Diane?
I move the board recess into an executive session to discuss pending negotiations between the Board of Education and United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at eight fifty-five.
Second.
There was a motion by Diane and a second by Stan that we admit, that we had moved into executive session. Please cast your votes. Motion passes seven zero, we are in recess to executive session. I call the meeting back to order. No report or information is necessary. Next item?
Next item, executive session.
Diane?
I move the board recess to an executive session to discuss an appeal hearing pursuant to the exception related to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the meeting, and the open meeting will resume in this room at nine fifteen.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion was made by Diane, seconded by Kathy, that we adjourn to, that we move to executive session. Please cast your vote. I think that's it, isn't it? Motion passes five zero, we are in executive session. Meeting back to order.
Ernestine?
After hearing all the testimony and reviewing the statements of witnesses and interested party presented at a hearing for a student, it is recommend, it is recommended of this Board of Education, this is my motion, that uphold the findings of the hearing officer with the penalty that was proposed.
I second it.
Okay, it was moved by Ernestine and seconded by Hazel. Please cast your vote. The board voted seven zero to uphold the hearing officer's proposal. Do I have a meeting? I, I move the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
I, Cheryl moved and Stan seconded, that the meeting's adjourned. Okay, motion passes seven zero. Oh, that's the, the appeal. Okay, the motion passed seven zero. And we have seven zero to adjourn.